Welcome, everybody. This is the Tuesday, March 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, we have a public hearing and a general meeting. It is now about 7:30. We are coming to you live from Darien Town Hall, Room 213. And this meeting is also being held go-to meeting via virtual from the Governor's Orders, which I think expire on April 1st. Just for the record, for everybody knows, we do not have a meeting next week. But on April 5th, we do have a meeting, and that's going to be live and in person here in Town Hall. Okay, in the room with me tonight here at 213, we have Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning Zoning Director, and Fred Donat, Senior Planner at Town Hall. So without further ado, let's get right into it. The public meeting is the first item, Proposed Amendment to the Darien Zoning Regulations, COZR #1-202022, put forth by Pemberton 16 LLC. Proposal to add a new section 597 to the Darien zoning regulations to establish an age restriction within the Leroy West Affordable Housing Overlay LW Zone, which would require at least one occupant of every occupied unit to be 55 years of age or older. The full text of the proposed regulation amendment is on file and available in the Town Clerk's Office and the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online at Before we get started, I worked at a commercial brokerage firm or a commercial real estate firm called CBRE Group or Inc., whatever they call it. This property is being worked on by brokers in my office at CBRE in the Stanford office that sit across my desk. I think I can view this application impartially based upon the facts that are going to be presented to us of the case. But Mr. Mazin, I'll offer it to you. If you want me to recuse myself, I shall, and I will hand over the reins to the Vice Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that. I think I'm working here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly, yes.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions? Your role in this, are you, is, I'm not familiar with exactly who at CBRE is working on this or what they're doing, but in your particular office, you mentioned the people sitting across from you. What are they doing? Are they doing appraisal work or marketing or what?
The property is being marketed for sale?
Yes.
And the brokers that sit opposite from me are the sales brokers that are offering the property. It's on the market since, I don't know.
I usually leave this up to the commission members. I've done that for the last 25, 30 years. If there's a likelihood or a possibility that as a result of your involvement, or not as a result of your involvement, but as a result of the decision on this application, would there be an appearance of a conflict that might, in retrospect, somebody might say, well, there was a conflict? Somebody other than me, and I wanted to just ask it that way rather than accuse anybody of anything and just let me have your thoughts on it. I know you said you think you could be objective, but sometimes it's just the appearance of a conflict that can become an issue later on. And I don't want to make it an issue, but if somebody else takes an appeal here, I want to make sure the record's covered.
I want to ask, I mean, I've no, if the building does sell or the units do sell, I have no financial, you know, wherewithal in it.
You know, it's not always financial. It can be personal. It could be somebody else raise an issue. You know, someone other than myself who might not like the result, whatever it might be, might raise an issue.
You want me to step out, Jerry? What do you think?
I guess what you're saying, Bob, is the prudent thing to do would have Steve excuse himself. We would still have a quorum tonight of four. It would be Adam, George, Jim, and Kara. If need be, we can always get Steve. If things change, he could get caught up in the future, but certainly at this point, we would still have a quorum. And one could argue, for the sake of the potential appearance, even though Steve would not likely, as he said, benefit in any way, other than the fact that he works with the people that are trying to, in some way, move the property, market the property.
I'll step out. It's easier if I step out.
Okay, so let's do that.
Just, just so it's, I have no issue, given the way we have to do these hearings now. You know, if you wanted to stay and listen, and you don't have to disappear while this is going on, just if you're going to recuse yourself, then just say so and don't participate. But I don't have any issues or any problem with you watching, listening, and.
Okay, I want to close my computer screen. I'll recuse myself, but you guys got to turn on your sound.
Yep.
So what are you guys going to shut myself? Yeah. So George Riley, can you take this over for me, sir?
Well, okay, yeah, I didn't really cough my hair or anything, but all right, I'm ready to go. Ready to go.
Let me just, I wanted to thank the real chairman for making the decision he made.
Thank you.
Very good, very good, okay. So let's see, was the agenda item read, Jeremy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. So we're ready to hit the ground running. So Jeremy, why don't you explain to us how we find ourselves back where we are?
Sure, I'll give you a link. Hold on. Okay, can everyone hear me now?
Now, yeah.
Yes, Adam says yes. So in Bob Mazin's application materials in his packet, one of the items he did include was the, a little bit of a timeline of where we were. You may recall, some of the commission members here did decide an application to a Leroy West Affordable Housing Overlay Zone in 2019. And that was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Bob, in his packet, very nicely included the judge's decision of September 15, 2021 in that case. In that case, the commission's decision to deny the zone change was upheld by Judge Frazini. So Bob is here tight with a different application to amend the zoning regulations for the Leroy West Overlay Zone to add a new section 597, which talks about elderly housing developments in the Leroy West Four Miles Overlay Zone. So this proposal is different than what the commission denied about two and a half years ago. And I'll have Bob take it from there in terms of what he's going forth for this duration.
Fair enough, okay. Take it away.
Thank you. On this screen, somebody's got too many microphones on. This is like.
Is that better?
Yeah, much better.
Yeah.
As Jeremy mentioned, I've laid out the background here. The previous application was COZR #3-2019. And.
It's got to be those computers doing something.
If you have a couple of computers going in the same room, that's probably. Okay. The appeal from earlier denial was under docket number.
Yeah, here we go again.
Okay, under docket number HHD-CV-19-6118276-yes. The new proposal is up on the screen here.
There you go.
As I go through this, I'll just point out one really major difference between the previous proposal and this one. The previous proposal, under subsection 1 here, would have allowed or would have required only 80% of the units be occupied by one person who's at least 55 years of age or older. And this proposal would apply that 55-year age requirement to every unit in the development. So it eliminates the possibility of 20% of the units being occupied by people other than, or people younger than 55. Other than that, the rest of this, in substance, is the same as the previous proposal. Now, I have on the screen now, the first page of. Here we go. I know I was in for a rough time when I saw a typo on the cover screen to this.
Zoning?
Yeah. Seems to be working now.
Just, can I confirm, you'd say all the terms of 597 as proposed are the same except for that one item in section 1? So the number of parking spaces is the same as the previous request?
Yes.
Okay, just want to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I have here the first page of the memorandum of decision, just by reference. And page 22, outlined in red here, is the reason this application is filed. And it's Judge Frazini's section of this decision where His Honor upheld the one reason that carried the day for the commission's position on the appeal, and that is that because of that possibility of 20% of the units being occupied by households where everyone was under 55, there may have been a parking issue. But Judge Frazini said specifically that the proposal, as it was written, was not consistent with the town plan of development because the reason for the appropriateness of this zone originally was to provide senior housing and reducing the senior housing from all 16 units down to 80% of them is, would have been inconsistent with that recommendation in the town plan. So Judge Frazini then said, nothing in, it could be redrafted, referring to the proposal. It could be redrafted and resubmitted, however, with the language in the proposed section 597A2 allowing 20% of the units to be occupied by only those under 55. As proposed, the text amendment was writ, as the proposed text amendment was written and submitted, however, the commission had sufficient evidence to reject the proposal. And so what we've done is changed the proposal to eliminate that opportunity for 20%. And that's what Judge Frazini said, and that's what we've done here. Late this afternoon, I received an email from Jeremy with a copy of a letter from four former members of the commission. As I read the letter, they point out density and safety and parking demand. And what I would say in response is, first, during the earlier or the previous application, the commission hired Mike Galanti as the parking consultant and traffic consultant. And Mr. Galanti, during that process, made it clear that he found no data in the industry data that is available that traffic consultants rely on, no data that showed a difference in parking demand between developments where the minimum age is one person over 62 versus one person over 55. So if we incorporate, which I'd like to do, is incorporate the record from the previous application, COZR 3-2019, there's sufficient evidence in there just from Mr. Galanti's testimony and, as mentioned in Judge Frazini's decision, that the parking demand should not be an issue. In addition to that, we said, and I think Judge Frazini agreed, in a text amendment proposal, the actual parking counts and actual parking issues would be more appropriate for a site plan review, or in this case, amendment to the site plan, than an issue in the text amendment. So that is basically our decision. I think the record is complete with a copy of Judge Frazini's decision and the references to the record in COZR 3-2019. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Bob. I would first like to ask, whoever MW is, your mic is on. Would you please turn your mic off? MW, you are currently, thank you. And on your last point, Bob, I'm not saying you didn't say this, but I just want to be clear that Galanti said he didn't have any information one way or the other as to whether or not it made a difference about the ages. He said they just don't have any data on the topic of the difference, if it's age 62 and above or 55 and above. There just was no information, right?
Correct. He said there's no hard, I think his words were no hard data.
Yeah, yeah, their institute hadn't studied it or something of that sort.
Yeah, that, I mean, they rely on the ITE publications, and that's pretty much an industry for all types of development. And he said he looked into it and found no real hard data to suggest that there was a difference in parking demand, just based on that age.
Right, okay. So Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the real, real issue for the commission is the intensity of use that is likely, if the number is one occupant in each and every dwelling, must be at least 55, versus the current, which is, one occupant must be at least 62. No, every member? Currently, it's every member needs to be at least 62?
That is correct, George. Jeremy Ginsburg, for the record, when, I didn't go into this much detail in my preface earlier, but when the Stefanonis, way back when, proposed an 830G application, they proposed an application as well as a zoning amendment. And you may recall that one of the integral items of that application was that it's an age 62 project, and every person in the application, in fact, the wording is right here, number four of the P&amp;Z approval of 2019, each unit in the building shall have it as its primary occupants, an individual who is age 62 or above. And we talked, if I recall, back at the hearings about the difference in age, between age 55 and 62. And while some might say it's only seven years, and those of us that get closer and closer to those ages are in that age range, the difference becomes whether you have children in school or don't have children in school, or whether you have grandchildren or don't have grandchildren. And the dynamics related to how much people commute, run errands, have day-to-day living, and in that, those two different age ranges, we did talk about that a little bit. Bob's right, Michael Galanti said there's really no hard data, but we, I do recall a conversation at one of the hearings, there's been many hearings through the years, about that dynamic being a little different at age 55 versus age 62 plus.
Okay, all right, fair enough. So, and is there also an issue, Bob can tell me, is the current provision in this overlay zone that you, one person must be 62 years of age or older for every member? It looks like you, Bob, quote the Fair Housing Act as saying every member must be 62 or older. And do I recall that we provide only that it's one member?
Well, it's, let me just.
I think it's every member, George.
Let me go back.
Okay.
Let me just go back to one thing, and I'll cite it. Page 18 of Judge Frazini's decision talks about Michael Antis' testimony. With respect to the age two versus, age 62 versus 55, the, the way this went through the system initially, it was presented by the original applicants as section 8-30G Affordable Housing application. And when it went through the courts, the Affordable Housing Judge, in essence, sustained the Stefanonis' appeal, and there were two results. Number one, the essence of that was to approve the application. And that meant that the proposed regulations that were in that regulation ended up becoming adopted. I think it was under a court order, finally, before that was actually done.
Correct.
So I would say two things. Number one, the regulations that were actually adopted don't really say 62 or 55 or something else. There is a reference to elderly housing and the parking requirement, I think. But there was never any real clear, really clear requirement in the reg. When the Stefanonis sold the project, eventually, this was condominiumized, and the condominium papers talk about elderly housing as housing where the, at least one member of the household is 62 years of age or older. And that is consistent with the other elderly housing references in the Darien zoning regs. And those are for the more substantial projects like Old Town Hall Homes, where they were built prior to the applicability of the age 55 versus age 62 distinction, and they were done under state programs, as I understand, so that the age restriction worked a little bit differently, where you were allowed to have only one person in a unit over 62. So the result was a marketing plan and a deed restriction, say, one person over 62. The language that Jeremy just read, I thought he said, and I don't have it in front of me, but I thought he said principal occupants, but doesn't say all occupants?
Primary, primary occupants.
Or something like that.
No, that is, that is wording from the applicant's condominium declaration.
Oh, okay.
Now, it's, part of the commission's prior decision, which is obviously now part of the record, because Bob incorporated that file of changes zoning regulation 3-2019, in item five, the commission says, at the time of the original Stefanonis' application, it was the intent of the applicant to restrict housing to those age 62 and over. And, and the rest is, I think the commission's decision's pretty obvious. We'll, we'll email that out to commission members, so you have a copy. But I think, Bob, one question I have is, the judge upheld the commission's decision to not approve the zoning change. I think one of the judge's reasons was, the commission based that decision on the fact that they need more elderly housing in, as identified in the town plan, and by moving the age restriction down, this is not serving, that proposal of two and a half years ago was upheld. Wouldn't this be a similar thing?
The difference is Judge Frazini said, allowing 20% to be occupied by people who are not 55 years of age, or in other words, not requiring anyone in those 20% of the units to be 55, was inconsistent with the town plan, because those would be units that do not provide elderly housing. And he said, if, that we could resubmit it without that 20% language in it. And that's what I have in the red box here, right here. It could be redrafted and resubmitted without the language allowing 20% of the units to be occupied by only those under 55.
Right.
We have thus, we revised the proposal to eliminate the 20% provision. So now it's back to all of the units have to be occupied by at least one person who meets the age requirement of 55. So, and, and back to 62, I think there may have been some confusion along the way, because I wasn't involved when the declaration was drafted. I don't know if the town approved it or town council looked at it. All I know is it's on the land records, and it says in a couple of places, one person at least 62. And that would be consistent with the other references in the Darien zoning regulations to elderly housing. In fact, the definition of elderly housing is housing for family units that have at least one person over 62. And our whole legal point on this in the earlier application, and it's an issue which Judge Frazini unfortunately never reached, was unless you have the additional requirements for marketing and waiting lists, et cetera, you don't qualify under the age 55 exception, or if you increase the age to 62 but allow people under 62 to live in the unit, you don't have those extra requirements. And the problem is that we now have five units that are owned by people unrelated to Pemberton, except that they live and own a unit in the building. The other 11 units, to comply strictly with the age restrictions and to utilize the exceptions, you'd have to make it age 55. You can't, you couldn't make it more imposing on the five owners of the affordable units by requiring additional marketing and all of that for those units, because they already own them. And they wouldn't be, they'd be only subject to the declaration. If, if the text amendment is approved, then internally, the condo association will have to amend the declaration. And my expectation is the commission would, or the staff would want us to come back and get an approval to change that age restriction in order to have everything consistent.
Okay, Commissioner Gately.
Long-winded answer, but.
All right, I'm with him. Commissioner Gately wants to call up.
Thanks, George. Um, so, I mean, Bob, can you just, I'm sorry, the microphone and like the sound issue tonight is really disturbing, so it's really hard to understand what people are saying, and it's, there's a lot of noise overlay. But first, I want to ask you about Mr. Galanti's traffic study. There seems to have been a lot of things put on the record that actually were not what Mr. Galanti studied and, and are assuming things that are beyond the scope of his traffic study. So instead of incorporating things by reference, I think in the future, could we have that actual traffic study presented and included in the record, not just incorporated by reference? presented and, and included in the record, not just incorporated by reference?
You could.
Okay. Because I think that's important because parking became, is a major issue. This may be a material change and may or may not affect traffic and parking. But I don't think any of us sitting here today, and given this change of conditions, can speak to whether parking with this change is sufficient because none of us here today are a parking expert.
Right.
Right? Okay. So, I mean, you got a little bit into, and I think what my real question is, is the federal housing statutes and the prohibition against, right, where there's not a state protected class and familial status is not protected under Connecticut state statutes, or it might be by reference, but it certainly is explicitly a protected class under federal housing statutes. Am I correct?
I think it's the other way around. If familial status is protected under both.
Right, but.
Age is protected under.
Always is. Right. Age is also protected under federal.
No, not, not here. It's, it's what happened.
Right, there's the reverse, right, where age is a protected status. If you're over, what, forty-six or whatever it is, it's sort of in various circumstances.
The way, the way it came about was.
I know how you want to go through the history and like how things rambled around and like this weaving road. But I think, right, there's two exemptions that allow you, right, to restrict housing based upon age under the Federal Fair Housing Acts. And that's right, the two that we talked about, which you talked about, which is the age fifty-five exemption and the age sixty-two. And they're different. But unless you meet either one of those exemptions, you can't make housing decisions based on familial status.
Correct.
Unless you meet those two exemptions.
Well, one of them.
One of the two.
Correct.
Otherwise you can't age restrict.
Or familial status restrict.
Right, but essentially familial status restrict gets, how you don't violate that is meeting one of the two.
Correct.
Right. So in fact, is there a risk that your applicant has a risk here?
The applicant, since I've been involved, has been requiring that all of the occupants be over sixty-two.
Okay.
Done it upon, you know, based on my reading of, of exemptions. But the five people who own the affordable units are not, are not bound by my reading of this. They, they can do what they think the documents, the condo documents say.
They bought it pursuant to a recorded declaration.
Correct.
Right. And so now, if, if the age gets lowered and the recorded condo declaration is not amended, and I don't know what difficulties or, you know, issues there will be with doing that, are they at a disadvantage? And then are the affordable unit owners are at a disadvantage vis-à-vis the other units, which to me, I think could pose an issue?
The, the owners, I haven't spoken with all of them, but the one or two that I've spoken with about this, and they're not applicants here, by the way.
I'm not saying they are.
Just the Pemberton sixteen LLC, the owner of the eleven units. They are not opposed.
I didn't ask that.
Well, i- if the text amendment is approved, the condo internally, the association would have a vote on, on amending the declaration.
They didn't, if, if, if the, if the text amendment's approved, the affordable unit owners at that moment are more restricted than the other units.
No, they're less, no, they're the same. It's, they're equally restricted in terms of the.
Are they?
Five. Yes. Yeah.
They're not, I think, I would like to look at, I would like to have that and the declaration that currently stands that they were subject to when they purchased the units brought before the commission. I think that's an important issue because I, I wouldn't want the affordable unit owners to be at a disadvantage and to be, have their units less marketable for resale than the other units. Because, right, I think if we think about, you know, generational wealth and how, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the last, you know, few months and year about, you know, and I don't want to get into systemic issues, but how zoning at times can be both a creator and a, a, a way, and, you know, right, homeownership is a way to create, it's a large investment for a lot of families, maybe the largest investment they have. And, you know, can be a source of generational, you know, wealth, maybe not massive or not, you know, Rockefeller's style. But if we have units that are the affordable units that are held, that have a deed restriction that is more onerous and makes those units less marketable than the other units, I do think, while the commission doesn't get into marketability of properties in a broad sense, I do think when we're looking at affordable units versus non-afford, you know, market rate units, we do need to be mindful of that and mindful of whether those units are less marketable and have a hindrance on thing, you know, on their ability to grow, you know, all these issues. So that's kind of one issue that I'm concerned about. And given that those are deed restricted, and I don't think all of the units are, and that this text amendment may have collateral consequences that may have an impact, I think we need to look at that.
Okay, let me just, two things. I can get the declaration for you and put it in the record?
I mean, I have. I think it should be part of the record.
Okay. And second, I know you don't typically get involved in finances or marketing, but since you asked the question, this change in the age restriction would increase the marketability of all of the units.
Not the deed restricted.
They're all deed restricted, restricted in terms of age. The affordables are also restricted in terms of price and qualification of the occupants.
Right.
Income qualified.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's an additional restriction, but whether somebody is sixty-two or fifty-five doesn't change the income requirement or the maximum sale price or the amount that they would have to pay for common charges. That's all part of the eight thirty G restriction.
Right.
And the eight restriction is a different, is a different restriction that applies to all sixteen units.
And so the, the text amendment changed now as opposed to the previous one is that it would apply universally, not just to the affordable units, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, I think that's an important point.
Okay.
Right, the judge did raise it, but I think it's important because, right, having some units have a lower age versus others.
No, we're not doing that. It's going to be across the board.
Okay.
It'll be everybody.
And, and, and what, this has been something that's been brought up now a few times and right, it's been litigated, it's been, it's, was brought up before, it was denied, it's been litigated, was not successful in litigation. So why, like, why, what, what's, is it because of the sort of conflict with the Federal Fair Housing statutes?
Yes, well.
That, that clarifies things for me. That's what I was wondering, but I don't see it in the narrative explicitly.
Okay.
I mean, I see they're kind of, I see an explanation about the Fair Housing Act, but I don't see like, but that makes things clearer to me.
Yeah, there, in, in essence, we'll touch on it in the narrative, but the essence of it is to qualify as an age sixty-two exemption, all of the occupants have to be sixty-two or older.
Right.
Qualified under the age fifty-five, only one member of the household has to be at least fifty-five. And Judge Frasini said in the town's position in their appeal was, well, you can, you can raise the minimum fifty-five up to sixty-two. But that doesn't answer the question of the other requirements for you five exemption.
Right, the compliance version.
Right, the, the marketing.
Yeah, the, the compliance regime, essentially, the enforcement, the enforcement of it.
Well, it's not just the enforcement, but there's marketing requirements. You have to find target communities and none of that applies in the age sixty-two.
Right.
And none of it is in the condo documents.
Right.
And that's, that's the rub here.
Right, so that, that's the issue.
Yes. You reduce the age to fifty-five and, and you, that's why the proposed regulation has the reference to the Fair Housing Act.
Okay. I just wasn't spelled out that like, that there's that issue with the declaration as recorded, where it kind of merges the fifty-five and sixty-two, but doesn't hit either one really exactly right.
Exactly, that's.
Okay, that's, okay, got it. Thank you. That, I, things are, I understand it now better. Thank you.
Bob, I, I think somewhat related is your comment under the Stefanoni age restriction language in the narrative, that six, the six affordable units were sold to purchasers who believe that they have a contractual right to allow a person under sixty-two years of age to live in their units. I guess you're talking about rental for that purpose?
Either rental or, or if they own it. They, they're all owned by people who are in households with at least one person over sixty-two.
All right, so you are the, all right, so not even primary occupants?
And my point, well, it's one person, so you call it primary or, I would say, you can call it primary because that's the hook that gets you into the unit.
Right.
If you don't have that one individual over sixty-two, you can't live there.
Didn't I, didn't I say that the primary occupants is plural and some reference here? The primary occupants need to be over sixty-two?
Well, as soon as you put an adjective in front of occupant, whether it's singular or plural, the door's open for somebody under sixty-two to.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. All right. Other commissioners, Mr. Rand? Mr. Ogatch? No?
Mr. Acting Chairman.
Yeah, whatever.
I, I wonder if, if I can get my head straight in terms of what we're doing here or what we're being asked to do vis-à-vis the the town's objectives. I mean, the, the conversation of the exemptions and the sixty-two and the fifty-five and whether it's primary or everybody or whatever is very interesting, but I, I fail to, to come to any useful conclusion after all of that. If one of the goals of the plan of conservation and development is to increase the availability of elderly housing, which I think it is.
Senior housing.
Senior housing, whatever the terminology.
I like that distinction.
Aren't, aren't we better off with sixty-two than fifty-five?
Well, there's no hard and fast definition other than what's in the.
Well, I, I, I'm just thinking about common sense here.
Well, it's, it's, the, the plan talks about a mix of housing. This is still housing for people of a certain age, I'll call it. And that certain age would be fifty-five instead of sixty-two. And the way we're proposing it complies with the age exemptions. This proposal would put into the regulations a clear definition of the requirements, age requirement for this housing development. There are no other housing opportunities in town that have this spelled out the way we're proposing it. And the only other provisions in the regulations don't require, they, they basically say one person over sixty-two and they don't require the marketing or the other things that federal and state age fifty-five, one person over fifty-five exemptions require.
Yeah, but.
So you wind up with a regulation that for, at least for this opportunity, this housing development complies with the exemptions under both the state and federal laws.
I'm still.
Which you don't have now.
It's not that we don't have it. It was crafted by, right, like.
We, we've been requested to do this to make the units easier to sell.
That's, yes, I, that's.
Council has submitted that fact.
Is it fair to say, Jeremy, that all the town references to seniors and elderly, et cetera, contemplate sixty-two and over?
Well, George, in section two ten of the zoning regulations, there is a definite form of elderly regulations, which refers to section two age sixty-two. That's in the definition of elderly. So when any zoning regulation uses the word elderly, if, then would my reading is it refers back to the definition in section two ten, which is age sixty-two?
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioner Ogatch, go to it.
If the judge rejected the application because the way that it was worded was going to reduce elderly units in town, and then by our own definition, elderly units have to be sixty-two or more, by changing this to fifty-five, wouldn't that also be rejected for the same reason? Because it reduces the stock of elderly available units in town?
No. The judge sided with the commission because the proposal that we made in the last application allowed up to twenty percent of the units to be occupied without an age restriction at all. And on that basis, Judge Frasini concluded that the proposal was not consistent with the recommendation in the plan of development that, let's see, the record shows that the nineteen, the two thousand sixteen town plan recognizes the need for and encourages senior housing. It's just above, right up, see if I can get my spotlight. It was right up in here. Needed, and then, so after saying that, the judge goes on to say it could be resubmitted without that twenty percent language. So we're, we're maintaining all sixteen units as elderly housing. We're lowering the age to fifty-five, but it's still elderly housing.
But we've defined elderly as sixty-two and above.
Well, you, you did it under a regulation, a regulatory definition that doesn't comply with the housing clause.
It does, it's an exemption.
Well, it, it just, those.
Right, there's the fifty-five and the sixty-two. They both are, are an accepted exemption. But we define elderly in one way. So if we accept this reg change, which by its own title is elderly housing developments, and that definition is fifty-five, do we then have to change section two ten in where we, in our definition section, we define elderly? And then what are the collateral consequences intended and unintended from those changes and from that inconsistency in defined terms? Again, it's, I mean, I know I raise this all the time, Bob, so like, right, the unintended consequences of like text. But that, that's kind of like one of the unintended collateral consequences that I get concerned about.
One of the, yeah, unintended consequence, well, I believe.
Collateral consequence, right.
Well, collateral or.
Whatever, you know what, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. One of the, um, uh, well, one point to make is that the original purpose, as I understand it, of the existing definition in section two-ten is to apply to uh, the larger projects that the town and state were involved in, in terms of the financing.
Right, I can see that.
Like, for example, Old Town Hall Homes. And the third exemption in the, um, housing laws.
Right.
Are, uh, does talk about approved projects or, uh, uh, either under a federal or state program.
Right.
Well, Pemberton is not under a state or federal program. It's privately owned. It was private, only built with private money. So that third exemption.
Doesn't apply to them. Right, and they had to go under what the, the other two we talked about. Otherwise, they are potentially, I mean, I don't want to say, there's an issue.
Yeah, there is. And our proposal, our proposal to resolve it is to reduce the age to fifty-five, have it still apply to all of the units and impose a requirement for marketing. And, and the other things that are required under the, under the federal, um, exemption in the regulations.
If you're currently a marketing plan as, you know, and not the marketing plan that we think of in terms of marketing to sell things, but like, you know, the federal statutes speak very specifically about, you know, what that marketing plan needs to look like and the record keeping. And so is there currently something?
Nothing like that in place.
Okay.
And not, it, not for this project and not in the zoning regulations. There are.
Federal law, there is.
But, yeah.
Yeah, but so like, they have to be anticipating that, right? Because they're going to have to comply with it.
Well, that's, that's why the proposed.
Why with that, we just want.
That's why the proposed regulation refers specifically to the federal statute.
Okay, so they are planning and intending to comply.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Oh, okay, that was my question. So it may, it's not in place yet, but they are anticipating if it is approved, that they will fully comply.
Of course, yes.
Okay.
By doing what? How will they fully comply?
It's a, it's a.
Internal mechanism of having the declaration amended to include all of those requirements.
And record keeping and.
The association would continue to be required to submit certifications periodically to zone, planning and zoning department. Except in the future, the certifications would include the additional, uh, record keeping and marketing requirements. I, I'm working on.
I think we'd like to see.
Right now, a, a, a marketing document for, uh, another project that involves uh, affordable units, not age restricted, but they're affordable. And there's a whole.
It, it's expensive.
Whole system together. And I spoke with a gentleman this afternoon about a totally unrelated matter, uh, about the marketing system, and he does it on a statewide level. So it, it's, there's a whole, there's a whole effort here that has to be implemented. And that, uh, is one of the, one of the positive outcomes here if you, um, if, if that regulation as proposed is adopted.
All right. And so do we have the alternative of, of, uh, lending our regulation to provide that every member of every housing unit in the development must be sixty-two years of age or older, rather than just the primary occupants? I guess we'd, we'd have to.
Or you would change your regulation, but then what do you do about?
The deed restriction, then how could we do that?
There's, there's two things. It's a regulation.
Grandfathered under the deed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Uh, let me go, no commissioners, okay? Anybody else, uh, in the public who would like to address this? Hello, public? I'm not. I'm not seeing anything. Fred, can you tell?
No, it doesn't look like we have anyone, George.
Right, okay, I don't see any mics. Okay. All right, then, um, so, uh, we would like to get the declaration for the record. Do we need to keep this open for that purpose?
Yes.
And I think Mike Galante's traffic study, don't, do we think, or am I like sort of a outlier here that we think that it's incorporated by reference actually?
Well, uh, you know, you want it specifically and you want it, you want to take a look at it and ask about it.
I would. I, I was on the commission when this was approved, so I think I would find that helpful. And, and previously, when this was litigated, I spent, I focused on the, you know, the counter declaration as recorded, the federal housing statutes, the state housing, you're right, this, that was my focus. And I, 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 I think I would find it interesting, but whether everyone else believes it's relevant to have it actually part of the record as opposed to incorporate by reference, um.
You can, that's your prerogative. You're, you don't have to, you don't have to wait for everybody else to agree to it.
I'll.
I think you know that, Karen.
I don't.
Did we inquire of, of Mike Galante whether or not the, the, the situation remains the same, that he doesn't have any data? There's been nothing published?
Read it, at least see it, and maybe it does say, I just don't. No.
No, I, I, I'm looking through my, my old stuff here and, um, I can, I don't want to take up time if, if we're going to get, have this continued. But, um, I don't know if he actually wrote something. He, he may have, I just can't put my hands on it.
Okay.
I can look up old.
He was quoted in the decision, doesn't he, about?
I know, but he, oh, wait a minute, here, hold on, hold on. Um, let me see what I got here.
I'm sure someone has it. It's got to be someone.
Hold on. Just a minute, just a minute.
Thank you, Bob.
Just a minute. You got just a minute.
Hold on. I, I know I, what did I, now I got to figure out how this darn thing works.
Can't we just put it onto that, like, the new, the new site? So that it's accessible to like the public and to all the commissioners and everybody?
But I want to, I wanted to see if I could pull it up here. Just for your benefit, uh, ju- just for you. So let me see what I, uh.
You really want to close this, don't you?
Who, me? I don't. I, I'll roll with it, whatever, whatever.
I'm sure.
Okay. Ah.
Look at that. Oh, that's great.
Oh, it's here.
Thank you.
You know, in, in.
That's really helpful.
Yeah, Karen, you know what it's like when you're, you're handed a piece of paper and said, okay, let me ask you this, this, and this, right? Lawyers don't like, don't, don't like to be put on the spot, so.
I know, but you found, this is great.
I mean, it just goes on and on.
No, but it really helps. I, I wasn't on.
And I think there might have been a follow-up.
Okay, we'll check that, Bob. And, uh, we'll also, George, you wanted us to reach out to Mike to see if anything's changed on that question, uh, in the past few years. You want us to check?
I think that'd be useful. Just a, a, a quick letter by him would be, you know, for the record would be useful.
Okay, staff to check with Mike, and Bob's going to get the declarations for the record.
Good. All right, we'll hold it open till the, uh, at April, what is it, April four meeting?
No, April fifth is a general meeting that's already booked. We're looking at, and then the week after is school vacation week. So we would be looking at April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, okay.
Is, I, I think this is the first session, so we're, we're good on timing?
Yeah, you are correct, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, then, uh, we should get the chairman back and, uh, resume with the docket.
I, I just say the hearings continue to Tuesday, April nineteenth, seven thirty P M. At this point, we're a little uncertain whether that's going to be live or remote. Uh, people should check the legal notice in the newspaper for more details as it gets closer.
I might have to wear a suit.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know if I could fit anymore. I'm getting, I'm getting so used to these, um, um, they're very effective, they're very productive and you can. Participation this way. All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maslin. Well done.
Thank you for being so patient and for answering.
Okay.
No problem, Karen.
Bob, your turn to the meeting.
Screen, oops. Yep. There you go, there we go. All right.
I'm off the phone here.
I'm back. Um, what's okay in here? All right, the baton is yours. You're talking, but we're not hearing anything.
Okay, try it again, Steve.
Can you hear me now? There you go.
There you go, turn off your speaker. Uh, my speaker is off. My speaker's on. Hold on. My speaker's off right now. My microphone's on.
Okay, we should be good.
Okay, try that.
Let's go.
Turn my microphone on?
Nope, just talk.
Okay, can everybody hear me now? Not yet in the smile?
Yep.
All right, great. Uh, next item on the agenda, so coastal site plan review number ninety-nine dash A, flintstone prevention application number four-twenty-three, landfilling and regrading application number five-twenty-seven, eighteen Delafield Island LLC, eighteen Delafield Island Road. Proposed to construct additions to the north side of the existing Singapore residence to construct a new replacement pool and patio and perform related site job activities within regulated areas, including limited regrading of property. The one-point-four-six plus minus acre subject property is located on the south side of Delafield Island Road, approximately zero-point-three-five miles south of its intersection with Raiders Lane, as shown on the session's map number seventy as lot that number thirty-eight in the R one residential zone. Chairman, what do we got?
Sure, uh, commission members may be familiar with the property. It's the second to last house on Delafield Island Road as you go down the curve over the, uh, I call it the peninsula. It's, it's on the left-hand side. Uh, as part of this application, what they're doing is building, getting rid of the existing pool and putting the new pool at a similar level. Uh, when Fred and I went out to the property in the backyard, there's a number of different levels, so they're trying to, uh, make everything all at one level, which makes sense if you're going from the house to the pool, back into the house, you don't have to go up and down a flight of stairs. Uh, they're also making some other additions and alterations to the house. Um, there is, the property's in the flood zone, the house is in the flood zone, there is some ledge on the property as well. Uh, property is served by a septic system. Um, Ted Malone is here to talk to us a little bit about coastal flood, um, a little bit of regrading. I will note for the record, Darren Oustifying sent in comments dated March third, twenty-twenty-two, uh, and supplemented by comments dated March eighth, twenty-twenty-two. We did refer this to the state of Connecticut, D E E P, uh, but they did not submit any response comments. So Ted, at this point, I'll let you take it away.
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. Good evening. My name is Ted Malone, professional engineer with Redness and Mead, representing one-eighteen Delafield Island LLC. With me tonight are the principal owners of one-eighteen Delafield Island, Jana and Brad Roman, architect Gabriella Abini from Austin Patterson Diston Architects, Bill Kenny with William Kenny Associates, and Bill Mandarville with the Talman Building Company. Um, one-eighteen Delafield Road is one of three properties located after the causeway on the southern tip of Delafield Island Road. It's bounded by Scott's Cove to the north and south and residential properties to the west and east. Um, limited coastal area management boundary is shown in blue on the exhibit and the flood hazard zone is shown in red. We are here before you seeking coastal site plan review, flood damage prevention, and landfilling and regrading approvals. The two-story, the two-story Mediterranean-style dwelling was built in nineteen-eleven. It's approximately eighty-one hundred square feet with a detached garage. The exterior walls are concrete block with a stucco finish with, with a roof made of authentic glazed ceramic tiles. The dwelling is six bedrooms with six bathrooms. The building improvements will complement the Mediterranean-style dwelling with small additions totaling about fourteen hundred gross square foot, of which three-hundred-fifty square foot, feet is within existing terraced areas. The dwelling will become a seven-bedroom residence and will remain with six baths. The, the, the improvements will result in the garage structure being connected to the house. Along with the garage being converted to a three-car garage, interior renovation to existing dwelling is also being proposed. The pool is being relocated a few feet landward of its current location. A small portion of the pool will be located within the coastal area management boundary, approximately ninety-six feet away from the mean-high water line. To minimize site disturbance and prevent damage to mature trees, the wall adjacent to the existing pool will be maintained. The additions are also located within the coastal area management boundary, approximately fifty-five to sixty feet away from the mean-high water line. A rain garden was designed south of the pool to enhance water quality prior to discharging a grade approximately seventy feet from the mean-high water line. The rain garden will recharge the groundwater and filter pollutants. Peak rates of runoff as part of this project will be due. The existing septic system will continue to service the building. A future septic replacement area has been established on the plans. Sediment and erosion controls have been designed to minimize any adverse impacts to coastal resources in accordance with the two thousand and two Connecticut guidelines for soil erosion and sediment controls. William Kenny Associates identified coastal resources on adjacent to and off-site, reviewed the development, redevelopment activities, and found the improvements consisted with CAM policies that will not affect will and will not result in adverse impacts to coastal resources. The property lies within the FEMA flood hazard zone. Portions of the property are within the velocity zone, A-zone thirteen, and the remainder of the property in flood zone X. No improvements are proposed in the velocity zone. The dwelling first floor elevation is twenty-one-point-eight, the lowest level elevation is thirteen-point-two, and the garage elevation is thirteen-point-nine. The pool and the majority of the building is located within flood zone X. The improvements, the building improvements are considered a substantial improvement and will require the entire structure to meet, to be made compliant with flood standards. They include raising the lowest level floor and mechanical equipment to be one foot above the base flood elevation. The additions being designed in compliance with town and FEMA standards. The garage will continue to be used for limited storage, parking, and be fitted with flood vents. And the pool equipment on the east side of the dwelling will be raised, uh, to be one foot above the base flood elevation. The proposed activities identified above will now result in a net increase of the base flood. flood elevation or redirect flood waters and will be FEMA compliant. The limit of fill proposed on the northwest side of the building is minimal in nature and shall not extend more than twenty-five feet from the proposed building. The proposed fill and site grading located in the AE zone will assist with preventing flood damage to the structure and is limited to what is necessary and reasonable. Upon placement at topsoil, the area will be stabilized with Corlex Erosion Control Blanket. The grading has been designed to cause no adverse impact to the site or to adjacent properties. We received approval from the Health Department for the increased bedroom count and, and with establishing co-complying reserve system on the property. As Jeremy indicated, we received comments from DPW, which were addressed on March twelve. We believe the, um, project is consistent with town policies for standards of, for coastal site plan review, flood damage prevention, and landfilling and regressing. The team is here to answer any questions the commission may have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Ted. Did we have Darren's letter from March twelve?
Uh, we do. It's right here. Um, I think we put it in packets. It's, um, March eighth.
March eighth, okay. But we're, we're sure all these were taken care of. Okay, so everything's being raised a foot above, um, the, the elevation. So it's basically, basically to be moved to, um, fourteen-foot elevation, which is through the pool equipment. And what part of the pool is not? It's the whole pool fourteen?
No, the, the pool is, is well above fourteen. It's just located in the coastal, uh, area management boundary.
Got it. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, you did say that. Okay, um, commissioners, do we guys have, you have any questions on this application? It looks like they're doing everything according to plan and they're popping out two sections between the garage that was a, um, driving court, um, a driving court and another open lawn area. Um, that's going to be now the house, which you can see on the top and the bottom of the one section in the middle. The pool is going to be outdated. I mean, I was down there a while ago. The pool's outdated and going to get brought up to current standards, um, which is always a good thing. The fact that a piece of it is inside the flood zone, um, we've seen that before and that's just the risk that the applicant takes, but it is, um, at a fourteen-foot elevation or even higher. What's on your plan says fifteen oh one, but I can't tell if that's the pool or not, um, which is okay. But I think we got everything you said. Ask to find call, um, rare off on it. The only thing I would like to see is, um, do you have a copy of the landscaping plan you can put up on the screen too?
Um, well, the, the, um, I do. Um, the landscaping, you know, the site has mature trees and a lot of landscaping and, and it was very important to our client that we don't, we don't take down a lot of mature trees. The only landscaping that is really proposed is, is within the rain garden. And, and that's really the only planting we, um, actually the, the plantings were, um, were selected by Bill Kenny and we put them on the plans.
But aren't you going to re- re-landscape around the new pool?
Um, no, no, the, the, the new pool is just going to have terracing around and, and then this landscaped area around the rain garden.
And where's the rain garden again? Can you just point to that?
It's just south of the pool. It's, it's, I don't know if you see my cursor, but it's right in the location. It's, it's actually in the location of the existing pool.
That's, I got it. I see it. Okay. Um, any questions from other commissioners on this application? Carrie Gately, want to go, sir?
Well, yes, I'll be there tonight. Um, so these are the questions I kind of always ask because I, I will not even pretend to have the expertise that you have. So I ask these questions just because I kind of need a little assistance, like walking through some of these really detailed and technical reports and plans. Um, so there is an increase in impervious surface. Um, and can you just talk us through or like state for the record? I'm guessing it's not nearly close to like what is permitted for the property, but if you could just like spell that out, I think that would be initially helpful for me.
Yes, um, I apologize because I don't have that number just on the.
You may have even said it. This is a really detailed technical, like this is, and for me, this is a lot of information to like digest.
Yeah, so we're increasing impervious coverage by about six hundred ninety square feet.
Okay. So you're not close to any of like the
Thousands.
Okay. Um, and so the waiver of section eight eighty, can you just talk, like go into that a little bit and talk about, you know, the reasons and sort of the, you know, why the, you, the applicant believes that waiver of eight eighty is, is, you know, acceptable or sort of permissible or, or whatever in this situation and talk about the rain garden?
Yeah, well, we're not increasing more than a thousand square feet.
Okay.
We're, we're adjacent to the water, so there, there would be no impact to, you know, adjacent properties or, or rivers or anything like that.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then the rain garden was, was designed to help, help recharge the groundwater
Okay.
from, 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 from the area of disturbance, not for the entire site, but just for the area of disturbance.
Right. And so because you're adjacent to water, any increased water flow is going to go towards the water force. I mean, the, the large body of water, which is not, you know, a tight waterway or Stony Brook, it's a, it's the long round sound.
Yes, but in, in this particular project, we're actually decreasing the, the peak rates of runoff.
Oh, you are. Okay. Can you talk about that a little? I think that's important. If you wouldn't mind talking about that a little bit.
Yeah. So, so for the two-year storm, we're, we're not changing it. We're keeping it at pre-existing levels.
Okay.
For the five-year storm, the five through fifty-year storm, we're slightly, like slightly decreasing peak rates of runoff.
Okay. And then again, just for my, to keep this clear for me, because I think, like, storm water has like kind of the two elements, right? It's both velocity, uh, disturbance of other watercourses neighbors and then the quality, right, sort of of water. And so the rain garden is intended to address.
So the rain, the rain garden is going to help recharge a groundwater. It's going to filter pollutants from, from the tributary area and actually it'll even cool down the water before it enters, um, the, the Scott's Cove.
And, and why is that important or why do you think that's worth, worth mentioning?
Well, it's important because it, it just keeps everything, um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't throw hot water into, into a stream, which, which affects the ecosystem.
Right, a living environment.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and right, that's important to us because our coastal environment is part of, you know, preserving it is part of our plan of conservation development and right as people, it's just an important issue. So I really appreciate you guys, you know, you speaking to those issues and kind of clarifying and being, you know, being more specific to those points for me and for the record. So thank you.
Great. Um, and also just to add, the, the building coverage on the property, because it's an oversized lot, it's an acre and a half in the one eighth zone, the maximum allowable coverage is twenty percent. Um, the existing is eight point one percent and it's going to go up to nine point one percent. So it's about half what the coverage is.
Yes.
And then the other item, it carries a hundred percent correct. They're doing the water, they're treating the water on the site. They're not retaining the water on the site. That's why we have Coltechs. I mean, it's our, we have a rain garden, not a Coltech system. Um, just one other, with regards to the septic system, it says a septic system existing is to remain, and then you're going to have a reserved septic system. Is that going in now? Or are you just marking that out on the plan to say it might go in later? Or it's an area where you've already staked out?
Well, no, this is, so we did soil testing, but this is a system that'll go up in the future, should the existing septic system fail or require replacement.
Okay. Did you check to see if the existing system is in, in good shape? I mean, it's,
We did. We had to, um, with, with David Knopf, we had to dig a few test holes right near the existing septic system to make sure it wasn't in water. Um, and we, we showed him that it wasn't and he allowed it to remain.
Okay, that's fine. Um, any other questions, have questions? Adam, you okay on this? George, you okay? Jim, my, my coastal shipping man is okay? All right, fantastic. Um, Jeremy, do you miss anything before I go to the public?
Nope.
Okay. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? If you would like to, please turn on your camera, turn on your microphone, raise your hand, wave. Anybody you see Fred at all? No? Okay. All right, thank you. With that being said, like we asked earlier, there's not going to be a big, um, landscaping plan. The lighting's the same. Scott's Cove is very tidal. Um, so there's not a lot of boats that go in that area because it is tidal. Um, I know I've tried, I've tried going in with my boat, ran it ground a couple times, um, got sucked there, which is no fun. Um, so with that being said, and that said, um, I would add to a motion to close this hearing. Maybe motion made by Carrie Gately, Jim Rand made the second, all those in favor. Okay, there you go, sir. Thanks, Ted, for your time. And the, and the applicants that are here, we will deliberate this.
Uh, April fifth, deliberation's April fifth.
If deliberation's April fifth, and you might have a decision somewhere around April nineteenth, it sounds like.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your very thorough application package. Um, next item on the docket is flood damage prevention application number four twenty-two. Wow, this is tough one. Deruzio Lewazinski, is that right?
Is Nuski, I believe.
Is Nuski at forty-one West Avenue, proposing to raise the existing residence and, um, to the foundation and construct a new residential dwelling to and perform related set of activities within regulated areas, including removal of a detached garage in close proximity to Stony Brook and the installation of a stormwatered management system. The zero point one seven plus minus acre subject property is located on the southeast side of West Avenue, approximately two hundred and ninety feet northeast. It's in a section of Old Parish Road and is shown as such that numbers, um, lot number thirty-nine as lot number thirty-nine as lot number one oh three and is okay in the R one-third zone. Jeremy, gentlemen, what do we got?
Sure. Uh, I want to clarify something. Uh, if you look at the application materials closely, and I know the applicant, if he's here, we'll talk a little bit about it, is, uh, the application is for, uh, significant additions and alterations to the house. So it will seem like it's very close to being, uh, an entire demolition and rebuild, but they are keeping pieces of the house. So when you look at the submitted survey and it says proposed two-story addition, and you look at the engineering plans and the architectural plans, they all refer to a two-story addition. What's going to happen is the existing house that's on the property now will come down. They're going to remove the existing garage in the back of the property, which is entirely in the floodway, very, very close to Stony Brook. And then they'll re, in essence, rebuild the house at a higher elevation. The existing house does not comply with the flood regulations. So for example, they're going to have to, uh, get rid of the basement when they rebuild the new house. They're going to have to lift up the AC unit to be at least one foot above the base flood. So again, the advantage of this application is we're taking away a garage, which is too close to the brook, which is in the floodway. The new house will be rebuilt, in essence, at a higher elevation. It will comply with setbacks. It will comply with flood regulations. Um, and it will be, uh, less likely to flood. Uh, you have in your packets comments from the, your report from the EPC, which are in the form, I believe, of a letter, uh, dated February twenty-eighth to the property owner, as well as a memo from Rich Talamelli to Fred, kind of giving you an update as where EPC is with this application. Uh, because, because the work is within a hundred feet of Stony Brook, the EPC is, uh, in the process of its review, but has issued a report for you. So I believe, uh, Darius is here tonight, hopefully, uh, or someone can speak on his behalf to explain a little more about the proposal. They put in, shown Coltech units in the backyard to accommodate for drainage. Um, the house will be in, in essence, the exact same location as the existing residence, but as I said, that garage in the back will be removed.
So in terms of the word raising on the
It should have been lift, in essence, lifting because the new house will be higher elevation.
Right. So, so the word on, on the, on the, you'll notice it says R A Z, R A Z E. It should, R A, R A I S E.
Yeah, I think it, it's going to be substantially removed, but not the entire thing.
Okay.
Is that a good way to phrase it, Fred?
Yeah, there's a, a little, it, it's a little unclear. Um, ho- hopefully the applicant is here, uh, tonight to discuss this in more detail. We did speak with Rick Talamelli earlier today, who, uh, represents the Environmental Protection Commission, and, uh, it's his belief that the applicant proposes to, um, lift the house, lift the first floor of the house off the foundation, raise the foundation to comply with the flood regulations, put the existing house back down on the foundation and go up to a second level. So, um, that's our belief. Uh, hopefully the applicant can confirm that for us this evening.
Okay, so who do we have represent the applicant? Um, if you here can turn on your microphone, that would be great. Uh, is he here?
Nope.
No?
No.
No.
I don't see his engineer. I don't see his architect and I don't see the owner. Want to see if we can catch him? Want me to try, see if these are enough, Fred?
You want to move on? Let's move on.
Let's move on and I'll see if I can track down Mr. Liz Nuski or his.
All right. I want to keep this, this ball rolling.
Okay, you go to the next item. I'll, we'll come back to this.
Okay. Next item in the agenda is business site and application number twenty-four dash AC special permit combine training in twenty-five Old Kings Highway North Good Wyre Shopping Center, proposal to establish a personal service training gym on the first floor formerly occupied by Joy Ride. Space is located in the Good Wyre Shopping Center, located on the southeast side of Old Kings Highway North, approximately hundred fifty feet southeast of its intersection with Flipside Road, and is showing a sister spot number seventy-one as lot number nineteen in the DC zone. Um, over the years, we've gotten a lot of these kind of applications. Um, I don't know why we look at it, but that's where there's only words you've written. Um, my daughter used to go to combine training down at Greenwich. So if they moved to Darien, I wouldn't have to drive down to Greenwich anymore. I'll be very happy about that. Uh, but they're going to take over the old Joy, um, Joy Ride space in the backside of shopping center prior for being Joy Ride. It was the YMCA, if anybody remembers going back there for. Um, so tonight it looks we have, um, we have the two people. I think it's going to be Craig Vitale and Christina Menz from, uh, Combine. Anything I'm missing, Fred?
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well, Steve. Um, I've been working with Christina Menzo, one of the operators of Combine Fitness. Um, as you mentioned, they're going to be going into the Joy Ride Fitness space. Um, they're, they plan to operate seven days a week. Um, it's a, it's essentially a, a gym that operates on a one-to-one basis or small group classes.
Advertising for you guys right now.
The, the, um, the previous use, uh, this, in the space, Joy Ride, uh, puts sound attenuation in the walls and floor and ceiling. So any, uh, limited noise associated with the business should be, uh, largely mitigated from a sound perspective. Um, and
The reason why we see this because it's a special, it's a, um, special permit use against personal service and also because of parking. So
Yep.
Craig and Christina, why don't you take it away?
Sure. Um, I, like you said before, we've been in Greenwich for about, oh, twenty years now, and, uh, we recently moved to New Canaan, Connecticut, and, um, seemed to be a large demand for us in this area. And, um, I wasn't sure if I was going to open up a training facility closer to my house, but, um, nonetheless, you know, I've been working at New Canaan High School. I've been working at the Darien High School, and there seems to be a need, um, for my business in this area. Um, it's a passion of mine. It's, I wouldn't even call it a business at this point. Um, so I am venturing onto this new journey, which I am at fifty now and enjoying some, uh, getting out of the old routine.
Do you keep it, your other gym's still open? So you're going to? Are you going to?
My gym, Jim? Yes.
Okay, fantastic, great. It's a pretty straightforward application. I mean, we kind of get it. The sound attenuating is good, and if anyone had complained, there's going to be people next door. So you can speak more, but I was going to open up to the commissioners if there are any questions. Okay, Adam is okay, Jim Rand's okay, George Riley's okay, Carrie Gately is okay. That is, it's kind of easy. You're in Greenwich, I've seen you there before, I used to drive down there on Sunday mornings, I don't have to. We have a lot of them. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? Seeing none, with that said or not said, I would add to your motion to close. So moved, we have Jim Rand making it and Adam making the second, all in favor, I, fantastic. Ladies and gentlemen, we will debate this item or deliberate this item, we might probably, it's on the thing for tonight, isn't it?
It is not on for deliberations tonight. It'll be for deliberations and possible decision April 4th.
Okay.
While you're here, just in terms of, you know, we may have questions about, do you want to operate temporarily outside, inside, you know, I know during COVID restaurants, as well as, you know, fitness centers and, you know, boutique kind of small, not gym gyms, but like, you know, more boutique type of fitness places did seek and had the ability to operate temporarily outside. So I think if that's part of the, you know, what you're anticipating or thinking about, maybe be prepared to speak about that.
No, I can speak on it. I mean, we did not do that the last time. We actually pivoted our business and grew it through online training in people's homes.
Okay. I used to know if like, right, you know, if, if, I don't know what the retrofitting is going to be or what's going to happen here and how soon you want to get started. I know there's other outdoor speeds or there's, I don't know, combine, I guess if combine training can be done inside everyone's house, then I get I don't really know what.
Okay, there was some previous discussion with the applicant that we had as staff that they may be interested in establishing a temporary space while, while their permanent space is being, being built out. My latest discussion with, with the applicant, they indicated that they weren't entirely sure which direction that was going temporary status. So if they do want to go in that direction, we can, we can easily bring that back as a general meeting item before the commission at a, at a future meeting.
Or just, yeah, or if like things solidified between the next year, just, you know, be ready to speak about it.
I can add a little bit of color to that, too, just to clarify why. And it's, it's really the issue with getting equipment. So it could be that we would love to have a temporary space yesterday, but just with ordering equipment, we're eight to 10 weeks out. And given the amount of, you know, the work that the U B will do and then, you know, we want to do, it's probably a very close timeframe. So I don't think it really is a lucrative decision, given when we're actually going to get the equipment to be shipped to the temporary versus the permanent. So that's what happened there.
I'm sorry, but that makes perfect sense. That's a bummer.
Yeah. Good luck, we'll get back to you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Welcome, thank you.
Closing the hearing?
Yes. Got it. We voted six times.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, well said. Okay, I think we have Darius?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Great, thanks. Are you able to turn on your camera? Are you on a cell phone?
No, I mean, I tried to do that, but I don't know how to camera.
All right, commissioners and, and general public, and for the record, we're going to go back to the third of that was on the general flood standard prevention application number 422. Oh, is it Darius Lewazinski at 141 West Avenue? Sir, we already opened up the hearing. We had a quick overview from the planning zoning director and Fred, our senior planner. So we would just like to tell you, you'd like to tell us about the application, what you're planning on doing. If the whole house is going away, if you're leaving a piece of the house, you're just raising the foundation. If you could take it away, that'd be great.
Okay, what I tried to, I planned to try to do, I can remove the, the house, you know, the foundation will be existing. And I will have to raise the foundation to, to be over the flood elevations. So, you know, only really from the existing house, the foundation is going to stay, front steps going to be existing, and the rear porch, everything else will be.
So we're basically, we're keeping the foundation, raising it up a couple of feet, and then build a new house on top of the lifted foundation.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep, remove existing house down to the foundation, build up the foundation, install flood vents in the foundation, fill in the basement, and build the house.
Got it.
Yeah, I have to fill up the basement, yeah, and now you're going to remove the garage.
Right, and remove the garage, yes.
Okay, and everything, the existing foundation, all that complexion setbacks and whatnot. The reason why we're seeing this is because it's so close to the flood.
Well, correct, it's in the flood zone.
It's in the flood zone. And the car garage, okay. I pretty much get it. This is one of those small lots that's down past.
Across from the scout cabin.
Across from scout cabin, where there's the brook around it, too, there's a couple of little houses.
Brook's in the backyard, yes.
Got it, and then behind the brook, behind the backyard, you have the railroad track.
CLMP property is on the other side of the brook, and yes, the tracks beyond that.
Beyond that, okay, great. Any commissioners, how many questions on this application? Jim Rand? You good? Adam, you good? Mr. Riley?
So my question is, and I'm just sort of wondering, so it looks like the state EPC and the town EPC raised significant issues or, or concerns or, you know, requirements. And I know their jurisdiction and the things and issues that they're concerned about and is in their purview is distinct than ours, but there often is, you know, some overlap, maybe not in this case. But I guess what's, what stood out to me was that in the most recent letter or memo from the town EPC, they state that extensive list of additional information was generated by EPC staff on February 28th. Additional information was similarly requested by DPW staff on March 3rd. Copies enclosed. It is expected that the applicant will amend his proposal and resubmit for consideration in advance of the EPC's, and I don't know if it means, I guess it means EPC, not our commission, April 6th and May 4th meetings. So what we're looking at here today from you, are these the plans and proposals that they're anticipating that you're going to, that they've requested that, and are anticipating that you will amend and resubmit to them?
Oh, yes, yes. I work on the additional information because, you know, they're looking for some more stuff, you know, engineering stuff. And I work on all those documentation to get, put everything together. It's about like a 20 different points, so.
Right, I know, but they're saying.
I'm not ready with this yet. I talked to, with Rick, Rick this morning, actually emailed him. I'm going to send him all the information, I still might get, get everything ready.
Right, but is what you're resubmitting and amending for, for EPC in any way?
No, it's everything's going to stay the same, only.
It's different and resubmitted?
Everything will be, you know, I mean, the plan is the same, only I think you need more details on.
Yeah, I, I would, I don't want to speak for the applicant, Kara, but when I spoke to Rick Talamelli of our office earlier today, to just your exact question, Kara, in terms of where does the applicant stand in terms of being able to respond to these? And Rick's explanation to me was, a lot of these things are little details that in the old days, we would just have him kind of put it right on when he gets the building permit. I think that's a lot of those details upfront, but it's not going to change the height, it's just going to call out very specifically.
Building, more building permit type of stuff that now is required. Okay, that was my question, and that answers it perfectly. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara.
Yeah, they need a lot of stuff for the building permits. Okay, great.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, and that answers my question.
Thank you. With that said, did anyone in general public like to speak to this application? Anyone? Seeing none, I think we're good. With that said or not said, intention of motion to close the hearing? Jim Rand, you have a question first? Go ahead, turn your mic on.
I've got to find my mic before I can turn it on. With regard to these things that EPC asked for, for these additional details.
Yep.
We don't have to wait to see those to take action on this question mark.
I think it's more for the building department than it is for us.
I, I, I'm fine if we don't have to, I'm just asked the question.
Yes, that's correct. There's, there's no need for the commission to, to take a second look at this. As, as was previously mentioned, most of these items that were raised by Rick Talamelli and the EPC are specifically related to the building permit that would be issued for the property. And, you know, any, and any additional item that may be, may be of concern to the commission could certainly be, be added as a condition of approval as well when we, when we draft this. So, yeah, the commission won't need to take a second look at it.
Now, we have a new person that just came to our meeting, it's.
West Avenue.
I just have a quick question. The only thing I'm, I'm curious about is the flood proposal that he's building some kind of storm prevention. So I'm on the brook as well, and I just had terrible flood damage myself. And so if his proposal goes through, am I going to get his storm water?
Jeremy, you want to answer that? Because what, part of the plan, they're adding seven call tech units and retention chambers to keep his water on his property. There's, there was no stormwater management system existing today on the property. So what this is going to do with the new house on there for stormwater and then the gutters and leaders will all go into this new system that's going to be on there that should keep the water off of, off of anybody else's property. The goal for P and Z and the flood damage prevention is to everyone to keep their own water on their own property.
Yeah, I think Ms. Palmaro, if I recall, you're two properties to the east, you're on the other side of Mr. Plank, is that correct?
I'm next, I'm across from the scout camping, right behind Gregory's well.
Yes, so Ms. Ms. Palmaro's property, I think you're at 133, correct?
No, I'm 147.
47, so that's going closer to, closer to Ring's End.
Ring's End, closer to Ring's End.
I, I think the water generally flows from West Avenue, which is at elevation 74, down to the brook. So they will be intercepting some of that water before it gets to Stony Brook. So I would guess that the argument is they're holding back some of their water. They are removing that garage, so they're going to have about the same or less impervious surface. Let's see what the plan shows here. So I don't see that happening with the way it's been designed. Because they're lifting the house and they're putting in a drainage system. But I will say this, the property at 141 will still be in the flood zone. Flood water will come up from Stony Brook onto this West Avenue property. There is no doubt it will happen. They will likely have less damage than they do now, because as I said, the garage will be removed and the new house will be higher. But I can assure everyone on this hall that the Stony Brook will rise over its banks and water will come on to not only Mr. Lusinski's property, but all the properties around it. That will continue to happen.
Now, am I reading this right, that the elevation of this house is 72? Proposed. Currently, yeah, the back is 70, the middle is 72, and on West Avenue.
Correct, current house is 72.
With the first floor elevation of 77.8.
So he's going to be lifting the house, the house will be higher.
Great.
Yeah, we're, we're one foot over the flood elevation.
Right, but you're, you're not changing the grade of the site that dramatically.
No, I don't touch the grade.
No grading.
In fact, that was very clear, no grading.
Right.
I think for, for Ms. Palmaro's, because.
You just muted yourself, Kara. Kara, you muted yourself.
All right, I'm saying, I'm asking this because I think initially this was something that needed, I needed to sort of get my head around. The regrading and impervious and adding impervious surface is what are fact, are factors that we look to when we're concerned about adverse impact in terms of stormwater effect on neighboring properties. Is that right?
That's correct. We, we look at, now again, we, the Stony Brook watershed, you know, Stony Brook flows through much of the town. And this part of Stony Brook is about, about halfway through the town. So there's a lot of properties upstream of Mr. Lisnewski.
Right.
Contribute, and when rain falls from the sky and flows from those properties into Stony Brook, Stony Brook will overflow its banks.
Right.
All the way down as you crosses west, it goes by the scout cabin, crosses West Avenue, and then flows all across Ledge Road and et cetera, et cetera. To me, this will not make a noticeable difference one way or the other. It, it, it's not visible to the naked eye in terms of the millions of gallons of water that Stony Brook carries. And in fact, Stony Brook, as you all know, ends up here by Town Hall. So oftentimes, you'll see Renshaw Road right here in Town Hall gets flooded because of the sheer amount of water that has flown all the way through the town, across West Avenue and down behind Town Hall, across Renshaw Road, across the post road, et cetera. So even though he's putting in a drainage system, the, the amount of water is negligible.
In terms of what it'll capture, but in terms of, because he's raising, he's removing some impervious surface, he is not making it worse.
Arguably better.
Arguably, from what we can see here. It doesn't appear he's making velocity or runoff.
Right.
Because he's not changing, he's not regrading, which I think would be a factor that would arguably impact neighbors in an adverse way potentially. And adding impervious surface where the water can't be absorbed into the ground would be another factor that arguably, but I think right to your point, Jeremy, when the velocity from this, when the Stony Brook and its banks are overflowed, it, impervious surface of, it doesn't really, it, it's going to, water's going to flow and it's more about the condition of the Stony Brook.
You, one thing we have to keep in mind, Kara, which is a good point, this, this lot, we're talking about it, West Avenue is 7,414 square feet. It's .17 acres in size. So when you think of the whole Stony Brook watershed,
Yep.
It's thousands of acres, thousands of acres flow into the Stony Brook. Mr. Lisnewski is .17 acre. So he's a little itty-bitty piece
Starts way up.
Of that Stony Brook watershed.
And just to remind me, like, the Stony Brook watershed starts, like, New York? New Canaan?
Yeah, pretty far up, almost.
Yeah, so it, it goes a long way and it builds velocity.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. I mean, it's a lot to deal, I know West Ave has, I know the last few storms were really terrible. And the velocity was dangerous and scary.
And the whole reason why on this application, just to get this house out of the flood zone.
And raise it up.
Lift it up and, and get that garage out of there. No regrading.
And no regrading, okay.
Did we answer your question, Ms. Palmaro?
Yes, I have no objections to have raising the house or anything. My only concerns was his proposal for the storm water, if I was going to get an increase. I mean, my, my backyard was seven feet of water and my house was surrounded by water. I, terrible damage to everything I invested in my backyard. And, you know, it's very concerning. I've been here 10 years, I've never seen that kind of water. And all the changes that are going around, you know, I'm concerned about the value of my home and my safety. And all the changes that are going around, you know, I'm concerned about the value of my home and my safety. I just don't want it to get worse.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out how to fix my own water problem here, but I know that Brook just, you know, what he was over the other day, and we have no barrier here anymore. That storm washed the entire barrier away. It was like a tsunami, all the mud, I brought so much topsoil in my backyard. So whatever he's proposing, as long as I'm not going to get his water between the Boy Scouts and him, I just don't want more water.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna hear his water, but you're still gonna get water from the Stony Brook. Sorry to say.
Yeah, no one could fix that problem either, huh?
Talk to a higher power. It's way above my head, literally.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Do you have a motion on table to close the hearing? Someone made the motion? Have we got a second? Do we get a second? Let's try it again. Got a motion to close the hearing? Made by Jim Rand, looking for a second. Made by Adam, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Do we know Ms. Palmaro's first name?
Yes, I have it here in the record. Hold on a second. It's, um, Teresa.
She's a neighbor of the scout cabin.
She is, that's correct. She lives across the street.
I remember Jeff Wall, when he, you know, one of his first meetings spoke about, it, it coincided with a lot of the flood that he spoke about as a fireman. Just the situation on West Ave and sort of, you know, and, and so, you know, the West Ave neighbors.
Yep, the goal is to keep making things a little bit better, a little bit better, chipping away at the problem. And I think that's what we're doing on many fronts as we look at projects like this and other projects we approve for building permits. And Fred and I just met with a couple of people today that want to do work in the flood zone that are just trying to elevate, lift, lifting.
Water go through.
All day, every day, making, trying to make it better, minimize it.
Don't make it worse. Yeah. Thank you.
Next, that was worse. Okay, that's the end of the public hearing. Now we're going to go into the general meeting. Deliberation, possible decisions on the following items. The first item in general meeting is amendments to business site plan, application number two ninety-five, special permit application number two ninety-four, landfilling regressing application number four oh one, Road Type Shopping Center, Inc. At three, four, six Heights Road, proposal to amend the, the applicant's previous proposal to demolish the existing buildings on the site and construct two new mixed-use buildings, including the construction of an above-ground parking structure, reconfigure the parking and internal traffic circulations, create new modified internal plaza spaces and perform related activities. The deadline for decision is March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, which is tonight, unless for some reason we need more time and we'd have to ask the applicant for an extension. Okay, in our packet, we have a twenty-five page resolution. It was emailed out to all the commissioners on Friday. There is a subsequent, a subsequent resolution that goes along with this, which is the Goddard School, which is an excellent agenda item. We're really not going to get to that one too much tonight. This is our sixth night talking about this. We had three nights of public hearings and three nights of deliberations. So I have one, one more night to talk about this. And the application was written up, or the, the resolution was written up as an approval with not, with, with some conditions for it. I read the whole, the whole items. I can go through it step by step with certain people, just to make sure everything's on the record, we're on the same page. Do you want to do an overview, Fred? I think you were the first thing, or you want me to do an overview?
Yeah, I can, I can take a stab at it.
There are, just to a second, Fred and I had a conversation this afternoon. There are some called typos or some kind of clerical errors in here. At the end of, tonight, I'm just going to give Fred my typos. If we talk about them page by page, we can get to some of them. But, um, you know, the goal is to make sure we get everybody else's comments on this and it's clean as humanly possible. Good, Fred, take it away. I'm sorry.
Let me just start off by saying that this is, of course, an amendment to the applicant's previous approvals of twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, which we note here at the beginning of the resolution. The applicant, of course, came, came back before the commission with some significantly amended plans from what the commission originally approved back a few years ago. And on the first couple of pages, we, we note what those modifications are to the commission's approval and note the differences between the twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen approvals and then the, the changes, the existing changes, the twenty twenty-two changes from those twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen approvals. So we go into specific detail on changes in commercial space, restaurant space, and breaking that down further into quick service and full-service restaurants. And then doing an analysis on the number of residential units that are currently proposed, noting that that there's a general increase in residential units from fifty-nine units, which was originally proposed to the current proposal of sixty-five units. And then a fairly notable reduction in restaurant and retail uses that are proposed as part of this amended application.
What, what essentially kind of happens is it's going from a more mixed use, I'm not, I'm never gonna say half residential to half commercial, but the, the residential went up by six units, as Fred just mentioned. And then the commercial space in total went down by about fifteen percent. It, it used to be significantly retail. The retail space goes from, you know, a high of thirty-three thousand square feet down to what it is today, which is, is sixteen thousand square feet of retail. The piece that's missing to that puzzle is, is the eleven thousand square foot Goddard School. So it's less retail-centric.
Six thousand, Stephen spoke.
It went sixteen thousand of, of, yeah, it's six thousand retail, and then the restaurants got broken out. The restaurant actually went up from a total of eight thousand, six hundred square feet, to now it's about ten thousand square feet.
You're combining quick and.
Correct, you're combining quick and that. And, and with quick service, that's, that's designed to be donuts or, or something.
Or something similar, sure.
Yeah, maybe we get a Krispy Kreme.
Yeah, I'm not, I just think, I think, I just think those are important changes.
Yeah, so that's kind of things we can go, I, I have the most set of changes in mind. We can go through page by page, just to make sure everyone knows exactly what we did. And the neighborhood knows exactly what we did and what's, what they're doing and what we're, what we're approving. If that's helpful to anybody. You want to do that? You want me to do it?
Do, do we want to go through point by point? How?
I'm trying to go as fast as possible, but I want to make sure that if we're detailed as possible, that everybody knows. I mean, this is something that started five years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we don't have to go back to twenty seventeen. But I want to make sure that everyone knows, you know, this is their third crack at it. We want to get this thing buttoned down and make sure everyone knows that we're on, all on the same page and we know what we're going here.
Yeah, okay. We, we can go point by point. Everything is covered here. And the commission, the, the, the folks listening to the, the deliberations and possible decision tonight fully understand what's, what's included as, as part of, as part of this approval.
What, what, let me give a crack at it.
Yeah, sure. Okay, sure.
Okay, yeah. All right, page one, we talked about that a little bit. It's our sixth or seventh meeting on this one. Page two, one of the quick items is on item number two, the removing a portion of building two, which is the first building we call building one, which is on the corner. That's the Goddard School building on the ground floor. The other building, which is building two, is going to be halfway up the block closer to Palmer's Restaurant, Palmer's supermarket. And it's more of an L-shaped building. It has sections called it where it's, it's building two, then there's a building two D, and then attached to building two is the parking garage, the parking structure. The parking structure is, it's a freestanding structure, but it's physically attached to the other portion of building two. The hallway on the third floor attaches to the hallway on the third floor of the main portion of building two. So on, on item, on item two, number B is a boy. It talks about that there's three, three apartments of one size, two bedrooms on top of the parking structure. Four apartments with three beds on top of the parking structure, and then the parking garage will be or is attached to building two. That's something that's going to be added. The next item that we have, it talks about the deed restricted units. The deed restricted units, you have ten units there in total. We're going to get that a little bit later, but our deed restricted affordable units represents a fifteen point three eight percent of the overall project. The minimum, as you guys know, in town is now, it was twelve percent when this was submitted. It's been raised fifteen percent. The eight, the thirty is thirty percent. This one lands up being fifteen point three eight, and we'll get into that in a couple of pages further. We're talking, it spells it out pretty much, pretty well. I'm not, now I'm on page three. There's a big chart in middle of page three. It talks about the seventeen approval, the nineteen amendment, and what's proposed. We just alluded to that. The restaurant space was eight thousand square feet. Now we broke it up between restaurant, full service, and then restaurant, quick service. And then the retail space is below that. That totals up to sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two square feet, of which you have basically two restaurants, the total six thousand, six hundred square feet, and maybe a couple of quick service restaurants, and then a couple of retail stores, which is six thousand, three hundred square feet. The Goddard School, the childcare center's broken out. That's another eleven thousand, four hundred square feet, and we'll get to that later. That is for fifty-two kids and thirteen classrooms. On the bottom, it talks about the parking, the parking situation there. The parking's basically stays kind of sort of the same. But some of the parking changes a little bit because the use changes in the way they're doing the garage. The big thing about this is the second floor of the garage is fifty-two spaces. That's reserved parking for the people that live in the apartments. It does a detail to, in, in, in too detail in this, but remember, the opposite side of the Palmer's Market today is where all the employee parking is. And the lower portion of Palmer's, which, how you, when you go to the post office, those numbers are included inside here, but they're not really touching any of that stuff at this point in time.
Wait, wait, wait. Those, those lower level parking spots that are down by Infinity Fitness are included in the count for this development?
Yes, we believe they are. We believe that those spaces are counted in the total count, as well as the employee parking in the rear of Palmer's Market. Those two lots that are.
And so if we combine, if we speak about the required parking for Palmer's as a retail establishment, the required parking for the businesses down below and the bank, and then the required parking for the adjusted usage in the new development, do we meet all the regs?
Yeah, we're going to get to.
Yeah, we're gonna get, yeah.
We're gonna get to that. The answer is yes, we meet the regs.
But like, jumping around this fast, it's making it really hard to digest all this.
That's why I'm going page by page.
But you're really, and you're jumping, you're not really going page by page.
On page three.
Okay, the, the, the first couple of pages provide a summary, and then it goes into more detail on
But I'm still not clear, like.
Some of the specific issues.
What's in compliance, like.
You're gonna say, okay, if you keep going on, we're on pages like four and five in the middle of the page. Again, it's a summary of the retail space and the residential space. That's existing, what's planted a building one, building two. It breaks out all the quick service restaurants, the childcare and the residential. In total, the whole project all in for the new town is a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet in total. It, it's the total restaurant space is ten thousand, three hundred and fifty square feet. The thing to note relative to that is none of the restaurant space today has a provision in it for outdoor dining. So if they're going to want outdoor dining at any of this stuff, they have to come back.
But there's no space for it.
That's exactly right.
That has to be here.
Yeah, they're gonna have to figure that if they want it, they're gonna have to figure out, it's gonna have to come back some later and some other time.
I mean, I think the percentages of where they are and and, and what the regs, how tight they are, is that, if that has to be spelled out.
Well, they didn't ask for outdoor dining.
I know, but that needs to be spelled out, that, that they are at whatever percentage of permitted usage.
What we put in here, it says it will be, it is acknowledged that the project sponsor will need to return to the commission for detailed special permit reviews related to all aspects of the restaurants, including their venting.
But we specifically spoke during the meetings about how tight they were and what the percentage of overall usage was, and I want to make sure that's in here.
Okay, so I believe that would be specifically tied to parking, Kara, if, if I, if I understand you correctly, because.
It was, isn't it parking, open space, and overall development percentage? So, right, there's, there, there's the parking issue. There's the open space, right, which federal had come back to us a number of times about having to re.
Plaza area.
Right, so there's that. And I remember this site is like razor tight.
Yeah. The public plaza space that you're alluding to comes up later in the plan. It's ten thousand square feet and change in two separate components. And that cannot be dedicated. It's the public space, and it comes up later, is very similar to Grove Street Plaza. It cannot be dedicated to a specific restaurant. It can have tables and chairs, where if you go to Cafe Neat or one of those places, you can sit outside. But it's not dedicated to Cafe.
I know, but I'm saying, but remember, like, federated, federal came back to us because they wanted to, their restaurants and their tenants wanted specific dedicated space.
Agreed. This application has not done that.
Right, and I think we should know that.
I have two quick little nits. I don't know what you had, Steve, so can I just give you those quick nits?
Are you, is it, are they in the beginning or the end, or where are they?
Page four, item seven. I would add, I would explain Captain Shredders of the Darien Police Department.
That's a good idea.
And footnote that he's on.
And number eight, you've defined who David Knopf is. So, and then very last line on that same page. It says more traffic than the prior approval, but not built versions for the redevelopment. I don't know what that means. Not, but not built versions for the redevelopment. Somebody just suggest somebody look at that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and clarify that. That was, that, that was a direct quote from, from the applicant's traffic consultant. But yes, we will, we will paraphrase and clarify that.
Thanks.
So that's on the bottom of page four. It rolls over to the top of page five.
Yep.
Okay, and then I think what, what Kara's alluding to, it says on number thirteen, the commission acknowledges that no details have been submitted regarding the proposal for the restaurant space, other than those shown on sheet S K number three, prepared by Phil Seron. It's, we can add a half a sentence. It says the.
What does that mean? Like, if I'm looking back at this in five years, like, what does that mean?
It, it would mean something that there was no specific tenant fit out.
What's shown on sheet S K O three, prepared by Phillips? Like, is it that restaurants with? So those are the restaurant spaces and in them, there's and they don't show any outdoor.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen. The commission acknowledges that no details have been submitted regarding the proposed restaurant spaces, other than those shown on sheet S K O three, prepared by Philip Seron, dated twelve, seven, twenty twenty-one. So those, those plans are specifically noted in the commission's decision here on. So those, the, the plans are specifically noted in the commission's decision here on condition, condition A, and all of these plans are of course included as part of the record on the matter, so. Um, you know, in five years, when you're looking at this or someone else is looking at it. Uh, they would be able to just reference the file to determine what specifically that is.
So it. We related over to the federal plan, which we've seen a lot lately. Where they, they said that the one space on the end is designed for a restaurant, the one space in the corner is designed for, you know, something else. The one space here was designed for a coffee shop. That's kind of the same, um, item plan that we're talking about here.
Well, because there's that, that no details have been submitted.
There's no details about.
Then what's on the plans?
That's what, other than what's on the plans.
But we don't know what that is, unless we go back to the, like, I don't know, that's fine.
We can delete the sentence if you wish.
It doesn't, it's fine if you guys like it.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna flip to page six.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I just took, I don't want to jump on what everybody else has been talking about, but might the last sentence in paragraph number thirteen.
Yep.
Interpreted as um. I don't know, permission for any restaurant in the development to have outdoor seating for sixteen patrons?
I, I think that's a good point, Jim, I think we could clarify that by saying although it's subject to review and action by the A R B and Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, or, or, or take it out entirely, but I, I leave that to you, either way it's fine.
This. There be.
Okay.
Right, then the second sentence, it's, it's outdoor seating. Ma'am, are you specifically referring to the sixteen seats?
Yes.
So if someone wants to put sixteen seats in front of your restaurant.
They can't, they, it, this is like talking about that they don't need more parking, but they're not allowed at this point to have outdoor seating.
Right, it would be subject to review and action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the wording that Jim suggests.
Then Architecture Review Board, which is what it says in here in black and white.
That's for signage. You know, our C R P doesn't per, doesn't, doesn't permit outdoor seating.
Well, they review, they, Kara, they do look at the, uh, style of furniture, if you will.
No, they. It's gonna be allowed.
Right, but they look at the style and then planning and zoning would say whether it's allowed and where. So we'll include P and Z in the last sentence.
And like we often change, I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be that specific because our regs change all the time.
But we try not to, that's for sure, but you're, you're not wrong. You got changed twice tonight. All right, um, next, page six. Again, it talks about the, um, the, the, the two buildings, building one's got twenty apartment units, building two's got thirty-seven apartment units. Um, the only thing we're adding in that one, it says in building two, which includes the attached parking garage. Um, again, that's really thirty units in the building and then seven units on top of the parking garage. And those buildings, uh, as per the plans are connected. Um, the bottom half of that, and then it gives you the detail chart, the bottom half of that talks about.
Do we have anything in here? I think we, we talked about the increased square footage, but do we talk about the increased height? In that now, instead of it being an underground parking garage, it's now an above-ground parking garage with apartments on top of it.
The, the, relative to the underground.
About, right, we talk about the change from seventeen to nineteen. And we talk about number of units, we talk about full-service square feet, quick-service restaurant square feet, chocolate. Wait, we talk about all the square footage, we don't seem to talk about height. And maybe there's not a change in height, I don't know, maybe there is.
There, there's not a change in height, in two thousand seventeen, the parking garage was under the building.
Yep.
In two thousand nineteen, the parking space, um, went to where the Goddard School is today.
Parking space for the parking garage?
Parking, the parking was. It wasn't underground.
So when did it move from underground to above-ground?
It moved from underground to street level in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and then after two thousand nineteen, but in two thousand nineteen. It was a broader or wider or it had increased ground level square footage because it extended to where the Goddard School is.
The parking, the parking spaces in nineteen were where the Goddard School is today.
Right. Height by adding Goddard School and not having it underground anymore.
Yeah, what, what happened was at the beginning, part of building two was removed. And building two was replaced by the parking structure.
So what, if you're, if they're like a, and I'm not in the building business and I'm not an architect and I'm not an engineer. Is there a difference between garage and structure?
Technically, no.
No.
I just wonder, because you keep like, and I just, as a lawyer, like to me, like when people switch words, I, I, I wonder if it signifies something, so.
That's me talking.
All that changed, right? Apartment, the part of retail, restaurant, mixed-use building two became I, became parking structure and then attached by a hallway. So they're different buildings, but they take out the same footprint. As well as rebuilding two.
Correct.
Okay, and did the height change?
No, the height did not increase.
Between seventeen, nineteen and now, the height never changed.
It was always maxed out.
Oh, what does that mean? It was always as high as it can be in terms of, so it'll be as high as federal or high as Corbin or high as well?
Maybe it's a great change, yeah, the, the difference between this building and federal building is that the, the federal project where the height building is, that's in the flood zone. This as the road goes up, the corner.
Oh, is that why it has to have like that large pass-through space? Okay, this one.
You're talking about federal has a large.
Yeah, yes, and there's that like, sort of like, I call, right, like where I grew up, it's like a, where water can pass through.
Oh, the cul-de-sac, the, that's the word.
No, I'm talking about like, like there's a large, um, it's, it's lifted very high.
The building, the building that's on the construction now at federal is lifted very high, right? The ground floor of that is on that building is four feet higher than the, than the parking driveway. Cause that's the low point of that site.
Okay, and then this site, the grading is higher?
Correct, the road dips, the road dips. When you come from Heights Road, you started at, you start at, um, Chase Bank. And you go towards, um, where Darien Don't used to be, the road dips and then goes back up again.
Okay, so this is a.
This is the hype.
Okay, so, and, and the grade, the height and great, obviously the greatest, because we're not regrading. It, it, because they, they're not going under anymore and ramp is a driveway and built-in, not. Okay, but, but between seventeen, nineteen, even though the under, the garage was previously underground, the height has not changed. Because building two was repurposed and the footprint has been like, sort of shifted around, but it's not gone higher.
Correct, the building footprint of building two got a little bit bigger because of the parking structure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then now they put the, the other apartments land up being there.
But it was always impervious because it was always paved parking lot, anyway.
Correct, there was always something.
But it wasn't grassy meadow, it wasn't.
It wasn't great, no.
No, I just want to make sure that, right, if we're, we're increasing a bit. The previous condition was not fresh meadow, the previous condition was already impervious.
I mean, I don't remember, we went back to fresh meadow, but.
No, but I'm saying like, we're not taking a field here and making it already paved over and had stuff on it.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this is really, really, really important, I mean, that's why I want to methodically. Um, and then make sure everyone knows exactly what's going on. Um, all right, I was in the middle of page six. On the bottom of page six, it just talks about the regulations of how we got to the percentage of unit mix that we have, because that's in the existing regulations.
Yep.
Then back to where we went at the beginning. The bottom of page six, which is includes area zoning, which is number seventeen to the top of page seven. Uh, which is number eighteen, it talks about the um, number of below-market units, which is what's called B M R. Which is, we also call it the affordable units, not to switch around words. Um, where this comes from, the base number, uh, in the first two light items talks about the maximum density, which is twelve units per acre and you get the forty-seven. Then the base B M R is twelve percent on the forty-seven. Then if you go, the incentive units, we have a total of sixty-five, less than forty-seven. Get you seventeen additional units.
Mm-hmm.
Five percent of those seventeen additional units, which are the, called the incentive units, land up being, have to be affordable. So it's now, it's about, it's five point seven plus the three, plus the four point four. So you get up to ten units, that's why we exceeded the maximum of twelve percent. So it's a calculation on that chart and it's spelt out very, um, detailed on that one table there. Now again, there is a zero point eight number that's left. Developer has the option of rounding that up to eleven if they want to. And that'll come up later in the resolution, or they can just pay us the cash, which is the money that they're gonna pay and that goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. Okay, if you remember, just as, as a data point. Uh, federal has a heart and twenty-two apartments and sixteen of their units are affordable. They have two buildings also, there's eight affordable units in each of their two buildings. The next item that's, I think, is, is very important is, um, paragraphs number twenty and twenty-one. In order to be able to get the certificate of occupancies or the temporary certificate of occupancies for this building. You have to have the occupancy certificates for the affordable units. Similar, in a similar fashion, if you guys, um, remember. David Genovese and Bayward Properties build twenty-six East Lane, they got the C of O's of twelve of their units already. And those people have moved in before they even broke ground on the other one. This was something that relates back to what they used to do in New York City, where people would build market rate units and then they just somehow or other forgot about building the affordable units. Um, where in, in Manhattan, you could build them, um, off-site. And a lot of land off-site was north of Ninety-Sixth Street back in the day. Um, and it took a long time for those apartments to get built. So that's items number twenty and twenty-one. Um. What do we have next? Um, some of the grading, it talks about theirs, what Kara, what Kara's points is. I don't have too much on page, on page eight, the part I will say at the bottom. Um, if you get into items number, um, G as in George. Uh, it talks about building two D, that's the first time we, we introduced that letter of two D. If you remember, building two is, um, it's, it's north, it's, it's, I'm gonna say east, east of the Goddard School building going towards closer to Chase Bank and federal in the Palmer's Market. That's the front building, then this is Sky Bridge that connects it with the back, the back portion. And there's another bridge that connects it with the, above the parking structure. So that's why the reference two D comes into play. Um, later in that paragraph, we're missing a couple of words, it's really not really a word, but it's a typo. Um, it says that the final cross locations itself will be turned by the paying zoning department staff and the Darien Legal Traffic Authority, where legal is just gonna get added in there. The next line after that, the commission recommends the use of stamped concrete crosswalks as shown on exhibit two on page twenty-four of the resolution, that's in the back. It's not stamped concrete, it's stamped asphalt. So the word concrete's getting switched to asphalt. If they want to put in, um, asphalt or brick or brick or concrete, they're more than welcome to. It's, it's a lot more expensive, um, but that's what the Vicaros did. Um, as kind of sort of a speed bump behind the old Darien playoffs. Okay. Um, moving on, again, um, in the middle of the page, it talks about the bike racks. Um, which is kind of in sort, is kind of important to us. The bike, the bike racks are inside the parking structure. Um, and those can be used by the public. Um, there is a bike room inside, um, building two, there's no bike room in building one. Um, Fred sent on the email on Friday, just alerting the commission to items such as that. Um, I don't think we need to go back to that, um, relative to bike racks. I've, I've seen a lot of apartment buildings that are built today. The part, the bike rooms are way away from where the apartments are. This is gonna be across, you know, across the hallway also in the building. We do want people that do drive, ride their bikes like Kara's kid takes her bike to go to, you know, Shake Shack when it opens in there or Krispy Kreme Donuts. And they want to put a spot for their bike, um, they would put their bike inside the parking garage or the parking structure to be right. The, the next item that's kind of important is, um, if you read the middle of paragraph thirty-one. Says the project sponsor has proposed concrete, not model block sidewalks for Heights Road along the product frontage. The, it comes up later in the, in the resolution in the other portion. This, this model block, it's not the same model block as downtown Darien. It's supposed to be the matching model block that's used at federal. Later in the resolution says that the model, the sidewalk model block sidewalk is gonna match everything inside the Narrot Heights Business District, which is just this district. You know, there's only three projects in the district. The thing that we're, um, adding is we talked about this at nauseam too. It says, um, sponsor may buy along the project frontage. That includes the frontage that goes from the intersection of Holla Tree Ridge Road and Heights Road all the way until you get to Epi Computer Building.
Yeah, so, can you just, you're going so fast.
I'm sorry.
So when we talk about the model block, and I get it, it's not for the entire, it's not for the downtown Corbin district or the other sort of post-road districts in town, right, because there's the, you know, Rus sort of area like that mixed-use district, but the model block, I mean, this zone does, it, it includes more than just these projects.
If, if you go to page, I'm gonna skip around and, and I apologize if, if it's hard, but if you go to page sixteen.
This is why, this is, this is a mask, okay?
Says, expects the final design of all sidewalks associated with pedestrian amenities, street lining benches, trash cans, etc. Will be consistent throughout the entire Narrot Heights Business District and be, quote, model block style. The Narrot Heights Business District taught includes the part that is Leary. Includes its cleaners, it includes Epi Computers, it includes, um, all Kristen Science reading rooms.
Bank, it, no, Kristen Science reading, that's on the other side, that's it, that's it.
Yeah, but it's another, it's, it's another reading room that's the buildings on the corner. What we can do in this resolution is we can make the developer have the model block in front of all their buildings. We cannot go to Leary Liquors and.
I know, but that's why I'm saying, when we say model, like I don't know, it's confusing.
Okay, so let's look back to, to where we were, which is page nine. What, what might be confusing, it says, and sponsors propose concrete, not model block side for the height road, for the Heights Road along the project frontage. We're gonna expand that to include the entire frontage.
Asphalt, it's not concrete, right? And.
No, it's, it's, it's going to be model block. It's going to be this, it's going to be the federal style model block that they came up with. But it's not going to be regular concrete.
Right, so. But you say concrete, not model block.
Want to switch that, Fred?
This is sponsors propose concrete not model block sidewalks for Heights Road, which, so we're noting what they proposed.
But I thought they're not proposing concrete, they're proposing asphalt?
No, that's a different spot.
Oh.
And then in the, and then in the, the, the can, the conditions of approval were, were requiring that they install model block sidewalks consistent with the federal realty sidewalks.
So are we incorporating that, that site plan and that resolution by reference into this? Because if we're not, it's not, I, I question whether it's.
In the section right now, we're still in the findings. Okay? This is what they proposed, and this is their findings and what we've realized. Okay? Later in the back section, it's where, what we're, those are our conditions. Okay? When they did.
Why are we putting in the, in, why are we then in findings? Saying what we expect?
That's what we typically do, that we can see this, and we, we encourage that. There's a lot of words like that in there. Okay?
That's true. I mean, Steve is right. The commission can encourage certain aspects or express their desire for, for certain things, but the conditions of approval require those items. So the commission or, or the applicant shall do this, or shall do that.
Versus must. I mean, if you go back, and with the same, we're talking about concerns. If you look at item number twenty-seven, it, it details the findings in the first sentence. "The size and location of the trash rooms within the residential building was discussed during the public hearings." "The commission has concerns that these areas in conjunction with the single onsite dumpster is not sufficient to accommodate residents who will live there." That's one of our concerns in a finding found.
What's a finding?
Correct. So in the same thing here, a number thirty-one, that's a finding. Later, we're going to talk about what they have to do. Okay?
Steve?
Yep.
Yes, sir. The second sentence of thirty-two doesn't make sense. I think I understand the intent of the sentence, but the language, it needs something.
Okay. "Commission believes that it would be appropriate to place a new bus shelter on Heights Road. The building being, the, the being required by the commission here in Chubb be similar to the bus shelter now in front of Whole Foods at the corner of Busta Post Road and Metro." I think the being is, is.
Yeah, we're going to fix that. Okay.
The being required.
I have no idea what that means.
Okay?
And that can, that can actually be moved to to the, the conditions of approval. Because we're, in that sentence, we're requiring that a bus shelter be installed.
That's later as a requirement. We're making them put that in there.
Right, that's why this is confusing, because we're having findings and requirements.
Okay, now I'm into parking. "The commission finds that a total of a hundred and twelve parking spaces are required under section nine oh four of the regulations and some of the filing table with no allowance for sharing." This is one of the items that Ms. Gately asked about earlier. The table that you see there, which is item number thirty-four, spells it out, which is a hundred percent required by the zoning code as written, verbatim. Okay? So in, in the Palmer's Market, buildings one, building two, it gives you the required parking, which is eighty, eighty-seven for building one, eighty-three for building two. The, the Palmer's Market, I guess, is supposed to have two hundred and four parking spaces. And then Wells Fargo is supposed to have twenty-one for a total of three hundred and ninety-five spaces. Okay? Then on top of.
The gym and the businesses below Palmer's.
Yeah, that, the, the stuff that's on the bottom of page thirty, bottom of page nine, is the retail space.
They're not retail.
It says building one, retail, full service.
Building one or two, they're currently existing under Palmer's.
No, 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 building, the new buildings, one and building two, it's a mixed building.
I'm not talking about those.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the existing businesses that are currently under Palmer's.
Right, we're going, that's on the next page. That's the two hundred and four. Okay? That's the one at the beginning. That building's forty thousand feet, forty thousand eight hundred square feet, which includes this stuff that's downstairs.
Where on the chart is that?
It is on page three.
Page three.
Palmer's Market, including the bank branch. Forty thousand eight hundred square feet, and the bank branch is.
You don't specify the different types of businesses and what the regs require those businesses to have.
With the reg is per space, is that what you're asking?
We spell out in here, right? That parking requirements. And section nine oh four talks about what requirements there are for different types of establishment.
Yep.
We include, so there's building one and building two as proposed. And then you also talk about the already existing Palmer's and Wells Fargo. But we leave out the already existing businesses beneath Palmer's. And maybe they don't have parking requirements, maybe they do. But if we're including the chart, the existing businesses, and, and I think we talked about earlier that those parking spots are included in the count for the proposed development, I think then we, the chart should include those. And maybe it's de minimis, and they don't need to be included, but then we should footnote that.
So what she's saying.
We'll double check that. That's a good point.
We'll, we'll double check that, but I don't believe we have those numbers. They were never provided by the applicant.
So what, what she says, if you look at, at the bottom of page nine, it says retail one to two hundred, full service one to one hundred, quick service one to one fifty. That kind of stuff.
We'll check it. That, uh, that space under Palmer's has always been occupied by somebody.
Right.
So somewhere, there is a a sentence that says that this, the, the impact of the sentence would be that these premises down below Palmer's are required to have X numbers of. I mean, it's, we may not have it, because we haven't counted it, or the, the applicant didn't provide the numbers, but the numbers exist someplace.
Agreed. The, the thing I will tell you, earlier today, we talked about, we saw the special permit for Goodbye Shopping Center. This, that falls in a different zone than this one. When the, the space on the Palmer's got switched to the post office and the dry cleaners and the fitness house that's there now, those never came before the commission. Because it's a different zoning district, so. Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a regulation that's different between a dry cleaner and a post office. But we, in this resolution, where it's drafted with the two hundred and four spaces for that building, it's not, it's not broken out.
I know, but we, I think it's our understanding that those spaces are being included.
Yeah, we have to, what you're asking is, is to break out that, the.
Well, if you're being included, we have to know if those businesses require parking, because that's relevant to whether they meet the parking requirements.
Okay.
And maybe they do, I just don't know.
It's got it, this, what this table is establishing is what the total, total gross parking would be before we enact the shared parking situation.
There is no share.
No, there is a shared parking.
No, we say with no allowance for shared parking.
That's correct. That's what this table said. That's where the, the five hundred and twelve comes from.
We don't, we don't count, are we counting the ones below Palmer's?
We are going to check on it and modify the resolution accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So if you go to, if you now, we're back on top of page ten. Without a shared parking agreement, you have three hundred and ninety-five spaces for the commercial that's required. And then for the apartments, you have another hundred and seventeen spaces. So that gives you a total of five hundred and twelve, which would be, be required if there was no shared parking agreement. Okay? From the shared parking agreement, now I'm in paragraph number thirty-five, where it talks about the total required parking. And then then fifty-two reserved spaces for residential users. That comes out because those are dedicated. Okay? So then you have four sixty of what would be required if we did not have a shared parking agreement. The next paragraph talks about, well, the next bullet point talks about the shared parking room that's enacted under section nine oh five point one. You try to explain that a little bit, Fred, where you take fifty percent and you deduct this, where you get the number?
Yeah, the commission can take up to a fifty percent reduction to account for shared uses on a site. Right, so as Steve mentioned, we took that total parking required, not accounting for the shared spaces, a total of five hundred and twelve spaces, subtracting out the fifty-two spaces, which are reserved parking spaces for the tenants on the second floor of the parking structure, which gets us to four hundred and sixty parking spaces that can be considered shared spaces. The commission can then take that four sixty and take a maximum fifty percent reduction on that number for an absolute minimum of two hundred and thirty parking spaces, shared parking spaces on the site. The applicants proposing a total of three hundred and seventy-six parking spaces. Then we're going to take those fifty-two spaces on the second floor of the parking structure, subtract those from the three seventy-six to get to come to get a total of three hundred and twenty-four proposed shared parking spaces. So the absolute minimum for the site can be two hundred and thirty shared parking spaces. We have three hundred and twenty-four shared parking spaces here, which is considerably more than the minimum that would be required by the commission.
But it's less than current.
What I mean, it's less than current, you mean it's less than.
What she's saying is.
What's required currently by Palmer's and Wells Fargo is three hundred and ninety-five.
That three ninety-five is not accounting for the shared spaces.
So we're going to add residences, add reach, quick service, and reduce the number parking.
Exactly. We're going from, we're, we're going from five hundred and twelve spaces.
In theory, in theory.
In theory, in theory.
Currently, what do we have at Palmer's and Wells Fargo? According to this chart.
It's not on the chart. What we have there currently is not on the chart. Because in the whole project, it's more than just Palmer's and Wells Fargo.
But it's also, that's what the regs require.
It was a regular, correct.
I don't know what's there.
We don't know, we don't know what's there, because you have the old Darien Donuts, the old.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the plans to know exactly what's there.
Because if you, if, if, if a person who knows nothing who lives in the neighborhood and sees Federal and is like, whoa, and were to look at this resolution, they would say, wait, so currently Palmer's and Wells Fargo, which is what's there now, requires three hundred and ninety-five under the regs, but we're going to go down to three hundred and twenty-four with all this additional. I think if I was a member of the public, I would be concerned, especially if I had children going to school, or if I lived there, or if I was contemplating parking at the train station, or a hundred other reasons. So I think we need to clarify this.
We will clarify it.
I, I, I don't know how, how we can clarify more than the, the math that was done in.
Don't clarify it, but like.
In finding thirty-five.
Look at number thirty-seven. And move thirty-seven up higher. Okay? Because at thirty-eight, it talks about the, the, the shared parking space in the existing, existing, that's already there. The shared parking agreement already exists. Okay? That's what's talked about in thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
I think what we need to clarify is say this, it's like with no parking, with no allowance for sharing, as kind of after a comma, which makes it seem like it's a finding state. This would be the required state of parking if there, like, it has, I think, be a clearer statement. And then say something like, however, our regs permit shared parking agreements, which reduces the required parking, which we will discuss subsequently or in the next section. Because I think as it reads now, it makes it read as if there's no allowance for sharing, this is what's required, then we're doing all this reduction, and we're increasing usage, and I think it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to lead to an appearance that we are reducing the parking and permitting a lot of intensity, like more usage. And people are already concerned about parking and cars and traffic and backups and safety. So I think we need to make sure that this is drafted in a way that doesn't create confusion.
So let's move up thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Yeah, that we do it.
Because when you go into parking, you knew headers.
Yeah, yeah.
You knew headers parking instead of being thirty-three.
Yeah, right. If you state already that shared parking exists and is permitted under the regs, and start off making that clear.
So you move thirty-seven, thirty-eight up. It's an all-grade parking or subject to share pursuant to a shared parking agreements filed in Darien Records, volume four ninety-five, page thirty-four.
Yeah. And then go into the chart, and then say, without this sharing agreement, here's what would be required. And then this allows for the reduction based on the shared agreement.
So thirty-seven, thirty, thirty-nine is going to go, thirty-nine would go. Right? So, so. So it goes, in, in the new section, you're going to come out of the, you're going to come out with thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Then paragraphs thirty-three and thirty-four and thirty-five. And then thirty-nine. Then after, after thirty-nine, you can do thirty-six.
Yeah.
And then thirty, then do thirty-six, and then forty-six where it is.
Go through that one more time.
Sure.
The, the order of numbers.
It's going to go, the new heading is. It's gonna go, the new heading is is parking. Your first item is gonna be thirty-seven. Then thirty-eight. Okay. Then thirty-three is just a one sentence. Four is the table. Okay.
One thirty.
Thirty-five is the calculation for the table. Okay. And then thirty-nine, it says, it says the commission finds that the project sponsor provides sufficient number of onsite parking spaces. For use of both shared and non-shared parking. Okay, it's my my only question I've got in my head is what goes first, thirty-nine or thirty-six?
I think thirty-six, but.
Thirty-six too, cause you got, you have to conclude, say, a total part three hundred and thirty-six. Then after that, you can say thirty-nine, which is.
And then forty.
Then forty, so thirty-nine to forty, stay where they are.
Yep.
I have thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty.
Exactly. Okay, it's just another finding I wanna make sure everybody knows about. Um, where is it? Where's the wording? Here we go. In in paragraph thirty-six, okay, I mean, there's nothing, there's no secrets here. It's acknowledged that in that it's the third sentence. It is now that the other model kitchen site, the site, uh other monitors to onsite parking. Maybe needed as a result of conditions of this approval, approval. The possible provision for cart corrals and other reviews, including the Darian Fire Marshal and Building official. The the parking plan that we have does not include those things where you put your shopping cart. Okay, if you go to any grocery store, there's those shopping cart things that are sitting in the in in middle parking lot. They take up parking space. Okay, those are not on the plans. So that's just a finding that it's it's gonna come up later. But they might have to come back for approvals of the possible cart corrals. They include those on the plans. If you go by the letter of the law. You know, we're requiring them, if you use the fifty percent max. They're required to have three hundred and twenty-four parking spaces, they're giving us three seventy-six. So there's a little bit of a fudge factor there of only, you know, forty-two parking spaces.
And so like we're allowed to reduce up to a maximum of fifty percent.
Correct.
Would have to.
Yes, that's correct.
They don't have to do anything. That was a way back when we, it was called the Cunningham chart, is that it? Was that the other?
I don't remember.
But that's, it's, they they don't have on their plans, they have not put the parking corrals on there. So if I do the quick math again, it's three twenty-four, oops.
And they may not want them, but we're saying if they change the plans, they gotta come back.
Yeah, there's a fudge factor fifty-two.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm painful. And we believe this is counting employee parking behind Palmer's. Market and the parking underneath Palmer's that is currently used for Infinity Fitness. And the pre-existing tenants, most businesses down below.
Right, the dry cleaner and the post office. Be tenants underneath the Palmer's store. Okay. You run on the same page? The next big item is stormwater management. It talks about just the um. All this, all the stormwater items in there and the dates of all the items. It says the proposed underground system has been sized based on the required water quality and volume as well as runoff. Um, control for the two-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year, and fifty-year storm events. Most designed to overflow into the study designated points matching existing conditions. Okay, the next paragraph is what we brought up earlier tonight. The project sponsor previously requested a waiver of the fresh meadows for the western portion of the property. Allows the sponsor to install infiltrators under the Palmer's Market existing point parking lot. That was something that was done in. February of twenty twenty, they put in some coltext under that parking lot. Um, yep, Jim.
That's not under the employee lot. It's under the post office lot.
You're right, the call texture in the post office lot, what is this about?
No, they're not, they're under the Palmer Market lot.
The Palmer, which one, the back?
Edgerton Street.
Greg Palmer speaking, they were installed in the employee lot in twenty twenty, as Steve mentioned. So they were, they're, they're not. Sorry, Jim, but but we did install, we did install some coltext in that parking lot when we repaved it. But they were not required.
Okay, thanks.
But you are correct, Jim, there are some coltext in that lot as well. I'm sorry to interrupt, Jim.
It's entirely irregular, but in this case, we're gonna allow it. We're trying to get this right, and we appreciate your your um, your um, attention to it.
And just to be clear, just cause. Mr. Palmer is on, but there's the coltext that were installed. In the employee lot, and I believe there's some also under the lower, and there's also um. An underground detention or is the underground detention area the call tech systems we're talking about?
You're asking me, you're asking Fred, you're asking.
I just, I know this is an issue that people are really concerned about.
Right, I think one thing, I I'm glad you'd said that, Kara, cause it's very important, and I'll say it here for the record. Most of the water on the subject property flows the other way. It flows towards Hollow Tree Ridge Road, and I think it was clear that both engineers looked at that. So when people say, will this contribute more water to Vivalas or Sandas? The answer is, we had three different engineers all agree. The answer to that is absolutely positively not. This project will not send water in that direction.
Okay.
So I wanted to make that clear for the record. Three different engineers confirmed that statement, so I'm glad you mentioned it, Kara, because uh. The low spot in Heights Road is still the low hot spot in Heights Road. So water will still gather there in big rainstorms. And this doesn't change that fact.
Right, and this.
Better, but it won't make it work.
Right, because they're not recreating.
Right.
And. Right. And it wasn't like a, they're not building and increased, taking away grass and meadow to build parking lot. Or do parking lots there.
We're good with that. It keeps going on in in that section. Now we're gonna get to landscaping and lighting. Just for the, for the, um, just we take a step back for one second, it's now ten thirty at night. We're on page thirteen of this thing.
I I'm sorry, but the waiver of the fresh meadow approach. Um, that allowed the project sponsor to install that we just talked about infiltrator units, which are the cult tax units that we're talking about. Under the Palmer's Market employee lot instead of the originally proposed location, fine. So this was a change from two thousand seventeen to nineteen, is that correct? Cause this already happened.
But it's, I I didn't get to say it again, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Right, it's okay. So point forty-four. The sponsor previously requested a waiver. That is not part of this application that was already. Applied for and granted. Yes?
In two thousand seventeen.
Right, and so that allowed for the project sponsor to install infiltrator units, the call to break. Under the Palmer's Market employee lot instead of originally proposed location in front of Palmer's. The commission granted that waiver, finding that, but that was. That predate and it's not part of this application, the waiver, the fresh meadow approach, we are not doing that. It's already been done.
Well, it was, it was already done, it was part of, it was part of the previous approval.
Exactly, so I think maybe, I think we should put in here. Previously as part of two thousand seventeen or nineteen, whichever approval it was. Or as a footnote, that this waiver and that approval was already granted, so that is not part of this.
Palmer just addressed.
Yes, but I want, I think it should be part of.
Why are we going back over that?
It's in the findings.
Yeah, we heard it.
Or not, it's not specific as to when it was approved. And I think that's.
Done, we can't affect it now, whatever.
I'm not saying we can, I think this should be clear for the public and clear for people who are concerned about this. Who may have moved here, I may have been not been here in two thousand seventeen or nineteen. I mean, you can disagree, George, but I don't see why providing more information and a date is harmful to anybody.
That we can add, that we can add since it was project. In two thousand.
To address an important issue of time.
Yeah, um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, okay, we step back for a second. We have another resolution, which is the Goddard School, that has to get um extended tonight unless we get a, unless we get an extension. Um, that also closes tonight, and then the other one.
Twelfth Pratt, the deadline is tonight.
The deadline is the thirtieth, right, is that right?
Yeah, I.
But just effectively tonight, cause we don't have a meeting.
Similarly with Lombardi.
Lombardi.
Yeah, we have decision deadlines on on four resolutions tonight. Including Norotan Heights Shopping Center, the resolution for Goddard School. Twelve Pratt Island and seventy-two Alt Kings Highway South.
So how do we get extensions on stuff like Lombardi? We don't?
I think what we'll have to do is get extensions from Mr. Maslin tonight on each of these.
Is he here?
Yes, he is. And then Lombardi, I can get an extension tomorrow from Mr. Frangione. And then um, similarly.
So Pratt Island, that's Frangione, we get an extension from him tomorrow?
I believe he gave us to the twenty-third, so we have till tomorrow, I can track him down.
Okay, and then Lombardi is the thirtieth.
Can we get through as much of this of this tonight as we can?
Yeah, yeah, we can keep going on this, I think we'll get through this, I don't know if we're gonna get to Goddard School.
Maybe see if we can get an extension on the Goddard School and then, and then decide Pratt Island. And seventy-two Alt Kings Highway.
So we're gonna extend Alt Kings Highway, right? You said you're gonna.
Pretty simple resolutions.
I think we may be able to get through, through them, I think the key is get an extension on Goddard till April fifth.
Okay, we're gonna go through this one tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, um, you wanna take a break and see Mr. Maslin's here?
He should be here.
Attorney Maslin, are you here? There he is. Put the. There he is, look at you, sitting back and relaxing. We're running into a timing issue, so I respectfully request an extension of the Goddard School application.
How long do you have in mind?
April fifth is our next meeting, Bob.
So two weeks?
Uh, yeah, next week we don't have a meeting, right?
That's two weeks from today.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that.
And was that same for Goddard?
No, just Goddard, we're still working on this.
Ron Heights, we might need two more weeks too.
Yeah, well, let's get through it and see.
I hate to say if if you need it, you need it, but. If you're almost done, you might as well keep going.
We're, we're gonna keep forward on this one and then come up with this, but we definitely gonna need an extension on Goddard.
All right, and then the rest of the agenda tonight, I guess that's off.
Uh, yes, certainly the deliberations are off, we are. We've already been at this three plus hours tonight.
I got it, I got it, um, I just wanted to suggest that you might mention it if you're not gonna get to the. The other items, I don't know who's watching on channel seventy-nine or. For the benefit of the people interested, you might mention that.
Okay, so for all those interested, on on our agenda, we have deliberations holding on the following time permitting. Uh, we are not gonna get to the proposed amendments to the Guidepost School at seventy-six Tocanyke Road. We are not gonna get to um, the deliberations on one seventy-five Brookside Road. And we are not gonna get to deliberations for eleventh Seals Road tonight. So if anybody in the general world on TV seventy-nine, or anyone that might be a caller on this thing, we're not gonna get to those three items. Okay, it's now.
Not on channel seventy-nine tonight.
We're not live, okay, then my, my follower went home, my wife's asleep. All right, let's keep moving. Now I am on uh, lighting and landscaping, which is on page twelve, items forty-seven through fifty. This talks about about the the ballards. Lighting, the widening of the sidewalks. And then it talks about, while the sponsor has not proposed a new crosswalk from the site across West Avenue to the corner of Hilton Street. The commission believes that the addition of such a crosswalk could greatly improve pedestrian bicycle access. That's that little mini pathway to the backside of of Palmer's. To get something like that is, it's gonna be legal and traffic authority requirement too. Um, that's why that's in there. What else we have? The sponsor proposed plantings at the bottom of the parking ramp, along with new trees and plants at the top of the wall. Within the buffer area between the residential portions in north. And it's shown on the site, on the landscape plan. There will be a number of trees and better remove that are now within the slope that will be removed. So on top of that existing wall that's back there, there's some old trees on top of that wall. Those will be, those will be removed, and I think we're moving that wall back, right?
From where it is now?
Yeah.
Uh, whatever's shown on the plan, I think it's a little further back. If I recall.
Yeah, the the uh, the the wall that's being referred to here is the wall associated with the parking ramp. To the second floor of the structure. And that. And that moves closer to the resident, residential boundaries to the north.
Okay, the commission notes, um, I'm on the top of page thirteen. Commission notes the need for better screening of Palmer's loading dock from the walkway and believes in planning additional evergreens. At the southeast portion of the walkway would help accomplish that. That's another one of our concerns that we have. Uh, where else are we? Street landscaping, but Heights Road. Yeah, this street, I wanna read this one again, this streetscape landscaping showed on the plans along Heights Road. And Hollow Tree Ridge Road is a central part of this approval, as the landscaping features within the public bunch, as are. The landscaping features within the public plaza, we're just emphasizing that in our findings. Okay, now we get into the um, the public plazas. The total public plazas that we have in here totals ten thousand three hundred eighty square feet. And they're broken up into two plazas that are between, uh, one's really effective for building two. And one's really effective for building one. In the next paragraph in thirty-eight, we talk about the um. Um, the 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 street that's in the middle, we described that, I'm sorry. That's a little street in the middle of the, where there's a bunch of parking spaces. That, if they do close it for like a farmer's market, which is one of the ideas that we talked about, that's not. That's not included as part of the public plaza, those are those twelve parking spaces that are around an angle. Yeah, next it's thirty, fifty-three talks about that. The um, project sponsor may close off this republic events wherever traffic, I would say, will be able to circulate around the site. Okay, the commission finds the public plaza in harmony with the orderly fashion of development as well. The next item, this is where we do buffer areas, number fifty-five. Fred sent out the email on Friday with regards to this, he's just highlighting it again. If you look at the second sentence, it says the buffer areas, um, or the second bullet point, the buffer areas between the surface parking. Directly to the west of the parking structure, the adjacent reservoir is adopted, has been reduced to five feet. The commission, two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen. The commission, two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen approvals allowed for the same buffer for the safer, for the surface parking in the same location. So what, what, what Kara was asking too earlier about relating back to the other approvals, just detailing it. Maybe that's what we can put here, which says the commission's seventeen nineteen approvals. Talked about the fresh metal. It's the same thing we did here. Now, if you go up to the first bullet point, the buffer between the parking ramp on the northern barrier of the site has been reduced to five feet at its closest point. The commission finds that other than the ramp, the buffer between the parking structure and the northern battery, the boundary in between the surface parking and the northerly boundary is more than twenty-five feet. So the buffer's been reduced. But the boundary between the, um, the property line and the parking structure is twenty-five feet. So the buffer got reduced. Okay? Trying to make sure that we're on the same page. Go into page fourteen, it's another item that we highlighted. The buffer area between the residential ba- um, boundary and the Goddard School fence player is eight feet. The, um, the walkway directly north of the player reduces the buffer to one foot. That's really because of the fence, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a fence that closes the play area. So now you kinda sorta have a fence a foot off the property line.
From the property line.
The, the, correct, the, the fence that encloses the play area is eight feet from the proper, the residential property line to the north a bit. Directly north of the play area is a, is, is a, is a walkway from Hollow Tree Ridge Road into the site, and then there's some, uh, landscaping directly north of that walkway.
So the buffer's in the walkway? I mean, the, the walkway's in the buffer?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's the correction there.
The walkway and the play area is within the buffer. Twenty-five foot buffer area.
That's correct, but the, the fence is eight feet off the property.
Correct, yes.
Okay, the next section is there, it says the commission finds that these reductions specifically authorized pursuant to section detail there because of the specifics in this situation and the specific planning plan proposed, the commission agrees to reduce the buffer from twenty-five feet down to as little as one foot. The submitted landscaping plan shows the installation of new plantings minimize potential impacts and the park memory and park and I associate there. Okay, that's what the finding comes up to. Um, emergency access is, is kinda simple. You tell these is kinda simple. Um, there, I think it is important, the existing sewer connections via pump mechanism to Hollow Tree Road is to be abandoned and removed through taking out an old sewer pump system and putting in a new one. That's item fifty-eight.
Steve, can we just go back?
Yep.
That paragraph before emergency access, where, right, we're talking about the required buffers and that we are agreeing to reduce the buffers, right, not to other commercial, but to residential neighbors from twenty-five feet, not as long as one foot. And we say in here that the submitted landscape plan shows the installation of new planting to minimize the potential impacts of the parking ramp, parking lot and play area, but the findings really only talk about landscaping around the play area. I mean, is there landscaping around the parking ramp?
Yes, there is.
There is.
Yeah, we just mentioned that before, there's landscape at the base of the parking, parking ramp.
It's at the base of the parking ramp and at the, at the top.
How is that the?
Our parking ramp.
It's a very similar to what we did with, um, well, um, Walgreens. Supposed to be planes on top of the, on part of the parking garage.
So there'll be planes up top. And at the base, not ju- and then along, there'll be the fence and then there'll be buffering along that area too, even though it's one foot and, and this is, and the parking lot will be less than five feet, there will be landscaping buffering.
Yeah, it's, it's two specific spots we're talking about. The one foot spot is over on Hollow Tree Ridge Road.
Yeah, that sort of walkway behind the parking, the playground area.
So kids are walking down from Middlesex School and gonna go to Krispy Kreme Donuts. They're but in that, on that, on that sidewalk.
Yep, yep.
Okay, the other spot we're talking about is the houses on, on the backside that the, their backyards, the houses that are on West Avenue, their backyards, um, come very close to this development. So that, that buffer is now, um, is gonna be, is gonna be, the buffer is gonna be five feet. But the structure is gonna be twenty-five feet from the boundary. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Staff agrees with me. All right. Um, where are we? Uh, we're in public class, we did that already. Okay, we just did fifty-five required buffers, went through to emergency access. Special pa- special permits and findings. Okay, um, it's, we don't need to get into fifty-nine. Design location specific details of the proposed uses modified and condition herein shall not earthy, adversity affect the safety streets or traffic congestion in the area or interfere with power and circulations. That's one of our findings at the bottom. Okay? That's number sixty-two. Uh, keep going along. The proposal conforms to standard approvers specifically in ten oh five A through G. Above that, the streets of rightways. Um, the conditions capacity adequate to comment traffic generated by this, by the particular proposed uses. That's really a Michael Galante item in the legal traffic authority. Later, the very beginning, when, um, Fred brought it up, Captain Shredders commented on this project, but he commented no comment. And we had, um, Galante sign off on everything. Okay, so now we go into the resolution. This should show a little bit. So now therefore it will be resolved. The first item that I just noted is the public plaza again is ten thousand three hundred eighty square feet. That's the public plaza. It's broken down into the two separate sections, one that's dedicated really kinda sort of building two and one is dedicated to really to building one. Okay, the next major paragraph is bonding. We're not requiring bondings for the proposed public improvements. Um, but what we are doing is if you read the bottom of it, the new, in the middle of that section, which I'm in, um, paragraph B is a boy. The new concrete model block style sidewalk shall be provided for the entire frontage um, of the property along Hollow Tree Ridge Road. And hi- uh, I'm sorry, Heights Road and Hollow Tree Ridge Road along with portions of the west side of Edgerton Street where gaps now exist. So again, that sidewalk we're talking about goes from the corner of Hollow Tree and Heights Road. Where the, the main corners or what it crosses all the way to Epic Computer. The piece that's missing is, um, is the Wells Fargo Bank Ranch. Okay, there is a sidewalk to there for Wells Fargo, okay? But includes the spot of the parking lot that is in front of, um, that's in front of uh, the post office, Dynamic Fitness, if that's what it's called, in the drive-thru. Okay, that was something that came up earlier. Um, the next sentence after that, it says the commission expects the final design of all sidewalks and associated pedestrian amenities, street lining benches, trash cans, et cetera, will be consistent throughout the tire, throughout the Norot Heights Business District. In the model NB model block style. Okay, the design of the sidewalks along the street shall be contiguous raised concrete sidewall throughout the driveways dropping down to asphalt driveways. That's it, obviously it's gonna drop down. Um, where the curb cuts are going into the, the project. And I think, if my memory stands correct, there's at least five. It might be four. Okay? The next one talks about phasing of the, of the project. The only thing I want to make sure that we, that we put in here is there's screening around the project today, which are those, um, dark green screens that, um, stop me from looking inside it. We want those things to stay today and not.
They have to be expanded. They, it's ripped down. It's not all the way throughout. It looks horrible.
Yeah, it's gotta be maintained, which is the second sentence says that.
I mean, to be improved. It need to be, the amount of calls, email that I receive and people just grabbing me on the street about this. It, it has to be the entire area and it has to be secured and you know, put in place.
Agreed. It's gonna come up again in, um, sediment control, which is paragraph F is in Frank. But if we can just make sure we added that, because it talks about it must be maintained in a lot of different spots. And C.
Maintained from current state or maintains, because right now, I, I don't think it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, because there's nothing going on, right?
I know, but it's not, it's not there. It's there in pieces, but not, and it's flapping around, so like it needs to be not maintained from how it is currently. It needs to be put in place and then be maintained.
All right, let's, let's, let's see what it says here. I mean, we wanna bolster it up, we can. Okay? Um, correct access per, per, about the site, rose control. Uh, as well as required off-street parking. Okay, so in paragraph C, we're gonna add some kind of screening. Okay, then I think it's gonna be in paragraph um, D.
Okay.
All right, before I get out to D, let's think of, there's something else here.
F, you mean?
Yes, F, F, F. I just wanna make sure we highlight, um, paragraph E is in Edward. That talks about the, um, the public plazas. They cannot be used effectively by restaurants or food services, so they can't be desig- they cannot be used exclusively. That's the dedicated thing by, by, um, restaurants and food services sandwiches. Sub, the filing of the public plaza and the land records, that's noted on exhibit C, page twenty-five. Again, that is similar to what we're talking about here. It's similar to, to, to Grove Street Plaza. Where those plazas are not dedicated to somebody, to one specific user. If they wanna come back like Federal did or, um, ten twenty Restaurant did, where they have their own public plaza private to their existing use. That's something that they're gonna have to address at a, at a later date. It's not being proved today. Okay? Um, several erosion controls during construction, the project used, I said erosion controls through, uh, plans and condition A. Uh, necessary. Okay, the, the next sentence, sediment erosion controls, and then maybe add screening here, plus additional measures, right?
Green screen fencing shall be installed and maintained.
Okay, shall be installed and maintained to minimize any adverse impacts of construction. Okay?
Yep.
Got it. So that we're gonna put that again, commissioners. The next is a project traffic and parking, project sponsors not show any shopping corrals on the proposed plans, the design in the future. Um, reduced amount of parking and they're gonna have to come back to the planning zone for renewal action. We just talked about that. The commission hereby approves a reduction in the repaired parking as noted in the parking section of this resolution. The parking commission finds it under section nine oh five, um, point one. Reduction to three hundred and seventy-six space have been granted, including a total of fifty-two reserved for, um, the tenants. So just to double check, is that three seventy-six plus fifty-two? No, it's three seventy-six.
Including fifty-two.
It's three seventy-six including.
Yes.
Okay, um, off-street parking pedestrians and crosswalks, this talks about the crosswalks, and again, there's another building, building two E comes up. It talks about where the crosswalks are gonna be and how they're required on the plans. Okay, the commission recommends that all crosswalks be stamped concrete or that should be stamped asphalt again, right? I'm on page seventeen.
It's concrete throughout, so when, when are we changing to concrete and when are we saying it's asphalt?
It's the crosswalks we're talking about.
Okay, so those will, those are the asphalt, because the streets are asphalt.
Yeah, the, the streets are asphalt, so exhibit two, which is page twenty-four, that picture, that's stamped asphalt. That's what the picture is. Okay? Uh, the next item, Jay is in Johnny, is talking about a stop where they gets moved. Um, I didn't really remember that, but it is what it is. Uh, emergency access, we talked about that. Early warning detection systems, that's in there. Um, it, it, I might have missed it or might have glanced over it. If everyone remembers, remember we're widening, um, Heights Road near the corner of West Avenue. Now it's only one lane where I turn right to go to my house. Now there's gonna be a dedicated, um, right turn lane. And the other range has gotta be a dedicated left turn lane, because somebody goes straight. Um, so that's in here someplace I saw it, but I forgot to mention it, um, earlier. Okay, um, where are we? The loading, the loading on the plans, I mean, I mean, um, loading deliveries, which is Q is in Queen. The, the plans show that the, um, loading dock is in Heights Road. It's not entirely on the property. Um, we're ti- because there's no sign there, this is loading. The commission strongly encourages a project sponsor provide for at least one additional loading site. Um, loading area on the site. I wrote it that it should be within the parking structure. You know, someplace under there. That's where it's likely gonna be. Because it's not gonna take away from frontage of one of the buildings. Okay, the next side, the word loading shall be moved from any street signs in front of building ones, it's not approved for.
Steve, Jim, excuse me, you're gonna, is there enough height in the parking structure to put a truck in there?
Yeah, it's designed to have a, a, a fire truck underneath it.
All right, thanks.
You got it. We don't want it too high, but it's gotta be high enough. Um, we talked about this at our meetings. We told them to have larger mailrooms and whatnot. We didn't get too deep into the, um, building plans. But all these apartment comics have to have big package rooms for all the Amazon deliveries.
And, but loading for the restaurants, right, because they're, they're still anticipated, there will be quick service restaurants and a full service restaurant. The loading area, the deliveries for those restaurants is on Heights Road.
No, I, I, I bet you nickel, it's gonna be in front of the stores.
But there aren't many, stores have been reduced.
Yeah, but there's at least, I mean, there's, there's a total of, of ten thousand square feet of retail stores. At average, a thousand feet, that's five stores. Right, it's sixteen thousand six hundred seventy-two square feet of restaurants. I mean, a, a total commercial, which is six thousand squ- three hundred square feet of retail, and then the two restaurants adds up to ten thousand feet.
But there's no loading area.
It's gonna end up being in front of the stores. You wanna put something in there, it's gonna be off-hours?
I don't know. I mean, but how are they gonna have people parking there and loading and?
Right?
Right, they said, they didn't say anything, did they?
Right, I mean, I would think if, right, and I don't know if the reg speak to this, but right, if we're allowed to reduce by fifty percent required parking, I would think that a loading area would be contemplated as one of the things that would be a factor in which you would reduce it if you, if there isn't adequate, if there's not a loading area and we're reducing the parking requirement, doesn't that potentially was an issue?
So where do you wanna put that resolution?
I mean, I could be wrong.
The maximum fifty percent reduction would of course allow for that additional loading space somewhere on the site without causing a problem with compliance with the reg.
Yeah, but it doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
Doesn't change anything where, where we sit.
Where is that loading area?
It wasn't called out on the plans, but we told we can't be in Heights Road. It's not allowed to be in Heights Road.
But we don't know where it is.
It's, it's, it's not called on the plans, no.
The existing loading, the, the loading area that's proposed on the north side of Heights Road, that space will remain. The commission in this resolution is not, not requiring that they actually remove that space, but the commission is not giving them credit for that loading space because it's not entirely on the subject property.
And that loading space, that's not entirely on the. That's not entirely on the project area. None of that space is has spots that are counted as parking, correct?
Correct. Right, so so we'll just make it clear. They need to put a loading spot on their property. Is that what we're saying?
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. We'll make it clear.
Item U as in as in universe. It talks about their environment protective measures. I would add the screening to that one too.
What what number?
U as in universe.
Rough white.
Support direction is one seven control.
Oh, you want the green screen.
Other environmental protections are in place. Add some about the green screen stuff there. Around the parking area, store must be dressed and temporary during construction basis. Okay? There we go. Moving along. It takes off. Okay, it's in paragraph W. It just talks about that they have to have a professional there. To make sure everything's put in the in the right spot where we're requiring them to have a a third party professional. Watching this stuff getting it takes off the building official. If you do like a regular house, the building official is gonna be there and this one we're not doing that. Okay?
This is similar to what we did with Parklands or what the commission did with Parkland.
Exactly. Exactly. For a little, I mean, now I made lighting and landscaping, the landscape would provide the little walkway from West Avenue. That's the little path was a walkway. From where it's it's West Avenue through those little houses to get to the back of Palmer's store. All landscaping has got to be maintained, which is Z as in zebra. What else we have? There's no item B is in baseball, two Bs. Is we're gonna have a required as-built lighting survey at the end. That comes up at another time. For photometrics, we've started that a couple of years ago. The exciting should be designed to scale and direct toward the down cut off. Double C as in Felix the cat. It talks about the minimum of one additional refuse area shall be added to site sufficient comment to operation property. Okay, keep moving along. Relative to the bike racks, we brought that up earlier. The bike stores in building one. So I'll spare the exact size and location of the bike racks are to be rude and prove by the planning zoning staff. It's gonna land up showing up on the as-built survey, I would venture to guess too. The next is inclusionary findings. We talked about that earlier. We're gonna have ten units in here. It's gonna be. Four to four units shall be in building one and six units gonna be in building two. It's proportionate to the size of the two buildings. And again, this talks about that the you have to get the affordables in before you get the CFOs for the other buildings. Okay, little belts and suspenders. We don't really care. We're not saying if it's condos are for rent. In the next paragraph. Then it talks about JJ, how they have to comply with the program administrator for the deed restrictions. That's really not our expertise, but someone else in Tampa does that. If all the documentation to be on the land records. Which is KK, double L as in landlord. All the utilities are gonna be below grade. Everything gets put below grade. All the wiring, everything else gets put below grade. Okay? Next, other approvals and other items. There's no blasting if it's required to put a blasting permit. If it's required, it's come from the fire marshal. But the the review and action by the paying zone for outdoor dining bar areas of venting, that may be required at a later date. What else we have? Things are reviewed for a restaurants. Yeah, the last bullet point, things are question review and approval. For a restaurants, food services, severance or special permits are not being approved today. We're not approving the restaurants today. Okay?
The rest, let me just clarify that. The restaurants shown on the plans are being approved. The restaurant space is being approved as restaurant space.
That goes back to the park.
Plan zoning commission review and approval for any new restaurants. Food service establishments or special permit use not being approved herein. Jeremy, what do you think about that?
Is that La Taqueria? We did it.
I think they are being approved too.
I would. Any new, I would new could be misunderstood.
No, because federal, they're not coming back for every tenant.
Right, exactly.
For any restaurant, specific restaurants, I mean, because we're approving, right? Use this place for restaurants.
So we're gonna take out the last bullet. That's gonna go.
That was my fault for not catching that. That should be removed.
Okay?
We can clarify that by saying that any bar space or outdoor dining would need to be approved by the commission, but.
Yes.
The restaurant space that is shown on the plans, that restaurant space is being approved by the commission in this case.
Yeah, there has to be restaurants. That's that's what we do federal too.
Correct.
Okay? The next one is as-built certification required. It talks about an as-built typographical survey and as-built photometric plan, lighting plan. And then it says adjustment of lighting fixtures, ornamentation, shieldings should be needed to protect the neighbors throughout Light's Village and Glare. We did that exact point at twenty-six East Lane. After the building was built, they turned on the lights. The neighbors said, whoa, 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 together, everybody get out there together at night. They looked at the lights and they redirected them. So that's gonna be in here too. Carrie. Oh, oh, is kind of now we're getting into the real real rail boilerplate, well, extra construction, including that never could matter friend. That's included in here. PP is the same thing. If I were in the plan, that doesn't really change. Q is the same thing. It talks about the dates of all these items. Okay? So now we're effectively through this. The inclusionary housing zone, it's exhibit one. Where it says how we got to the number of inclusionary units of ten. That details out the exact math. There's a quick typo in there where it says in the middle of the page, it says. Fifty-nine units is three point one point three seven times. That's almost be sixty-five units. We have sixty-five units here, not fifty-nine. Then on the bottom, I alluded to this earlier. This is the either or. Where it comes up to ten point oh eight. If they wanted, they have either a choice of either. Building another one. And rounding it up to eleven, or they can give us, which is B, or they can give us the money for the point oh eight in cash. That goes to the the housing trust fund. That's the either or. Okay? Page twenty-four is just a picture of the stamped asphalt that we want between the project. That's one of the common issues that we talked about. The secret thing plan is exhibit three. Okay? And that gets us through the whole thing. We made it. I know Jeremy and Fred have taken copious notes. And they have the edits that we want to put in here. So what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve. The the draft resolution as edited. Would anybody like to discuss this further or make that motion? Jim Rand, you making the motion? Yep, looking for a second. Adam makes a second. Okay, all those in favor approving this resolution as amended, say aye. Five, nothing. Fantastic. All right, we got through this. I really appreciate everybody's attention to detail on this and review of it. I want to go through it without it being page by page. And we did. And Fred's gonna get along correcting it. These guys made a ton of notes and I've got notes to give to them too. Touch that. The next item in our agenda is, what's our agenda next? The next item or agenda is a special program application number one oh one hundred and seventy C is in Charlie site plan. Wrote Heights shop, etc. Inc. Gathered school resolution. We asked Mr. Maslin earlier this evening to give us an extension of that one for another two weeks. So extension deadline is gonna be moved back. The item after that on the agenda is twelve Pratt Island Coastal Site Plan Review Number three sixty-five. Plushdown Adventure Application Number four eighteen, landfilling regaining application number five nineteen, government and homes at twelve Pratt Island. Jeremy's gonna talk to Mr. Frangion.
Correct.
That it says on a decision deadline is the twenty-second, but we think it's the twenty-third and Mr. Frangion will likely give us an extension. The next item on the agenda is landfilling regretting application. Number. Five twenty-one, Mario Lombardo at seventy-two Old Kings Highway South. The deadline for that one is March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And Jeremy was gonna get an extension to that one.
Yes.
I don't think anybody really wants to go past eleven thirty to do to do those three additional things. Next one, the general's delivery is only for time permitting. We're not, there's no time permitting. The chairman's report will waive that for tonight. The director's report, we're gonna waive that director?
Yeah.
We're gonna waive the director's report. Any other business, two thirds or vote, any other business? Adam's saying no, he's got no other business. He's Adam's done. Next upcoming meeting, we have next week off. The week after that, we have April fifth. That meeting will be in person. Okay, so everyone's gotta get on your in-person hats again. And maybe we would see Bob Bass and show up in person. The meeting after that is April nineteenth. So I think in the middle between the fifth and nineteenth, I think that's Easter break. Okay, Mr. Mountain saying goodnight. Thank you, sir, for the extension. We appreciate your time. With that said, I would entertain a motion to close. Tara Gailey makes the motion. Jim Rand makes the second. All's in favor. Roundhouse, five, nothing. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all your time. Good night, everybody.